All right. All right, 7:02, I will call the meeting in order. Janet, if you would please call the roll.
Councilmember Trupiano?
Here.
Councilmember Tillman?
Here.
Councilmember Clovin?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Here. And I will move to item two, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we move to item three, we just came back from closed session and there are no reportable items. So next is item three, public comment on non-agenda items. I do have one speaker card. If anyone would like to speak on anything not on the agenda, now's your time, you can fill out a card. And we can do so. So the first speaker here is Jim Killoran.
Good day, council. I am providing the council or citizens feedback from my next door post regarding the establishment of a pot dispensary in Clayton. My post generated a record 248-plus comments with 134 citizens indicating that they do not want a pot dispensary in Clayton. The post commentary from our citizens was cordial, diverse, and insightful. I recommend the council immediately redline this initiative from further action or discussion. As this is a contentious issue, if the council decides for further discussion of the dispensary initiative during your next strategy session, I recommend each member disclose any conflict of interest on this matter and recuse themselves from further discussion and voting. Conflicts of interest should include actual, potential, or perceived conflicts with your own interests or with relatives, friends, business associates of folks who work directly or indirectly on your campaign or political coalitions. As a reminder, as a council member, you're required to disclose your own conflicts. But also, you should disclose and discuss perceived and potential conflicts of your fellow council members. Our citizens expect you to do right for our seat. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe we may have one other speaker card. This is for non-agenda items? If it's for non-agenda items, please approach.
We good? Jeff, let me just address this. I don't know any of you folks, and I've lived here for 26 years. And I read that you were disappointed with all of that trio from, as you said, the last meeting. And, right or wrong, you know, caused a controversy. I'm disappointed on two fronts. One, the controversy has caused, because it does seem, a little bit to me, that it was a little backdoor in how it was approached, and something that's very important to this to this community. And I also understand the fees, and I understand the fiscal responsibility. But it's caused too much of a controversy. And two, just reading about you, the criticism that you seem to have, and I don't know any of the former council people, to be honest, maybe shame on me, but it seems to me that you're always criticizing former council people. That's all you seem to do. And I understand that you have to take the criticism too. Just my feeling about it. But it's a shame how this CBCA agreement has kind of split the split the community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. If there's any other comment or public comment on non-agenda items, or is this for non-agenda or for the consent calendar?
I apologize if this is an unfortunate procedural thing, but I'd like to ask that the MPDES be removed from the consent calendar?
We'll address that during the consent, and you'll be able to comment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, that's fine. Does any other comment for non-agenda? Now's the time. Janet, do we have anyone online?
Mayor Juan, I have a couple of hands raised on Zoom.
Okay.
So I will first promote CW. CW, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm sorry I can't be with you in person tonight, but thank you for letting me speak. I'm coming to you as the president of the CBCA, and I wanted to dispel a couple of the things that I've been seeing online, a lot of chatter going on out there as to what we intend to do with our festivals in 2023. I just want to assure the citizens of Clayton that the CBCA is moving forward with the Art and Wine Festival, which will take place on the 29th and 30th of April in downtown Clayton. And I have met with the mayor and his committee and the interim city manager, and our treasurer and I met on the 15th. And the door is open for discussion with regard to our our future agreement with the city, and we will discuss our our future festivals at that time. But the the impetus of this whole thing is that the mayor and I and the city agree that the optimal place for our festivals is in downtown Clayton. CBCA has paid every bill that we've ever been presented, and we've been working under the soon-to-be-terminated contract for many, many years. And and we feel that we've paid everything that we have in our fair share, and we will be negotiating our fees and structure with the mayor and his committee in the near future. So that is all, but just just one more time, I want to remind everybody, Art and Wine Festival will be in downtown Clayton on the 29th and 30th of April. We look forward to having all of you come out for that family-friendly event. It'll be a lot of fun in downtown Clayton. And one more quick thing, I just want to congratulate and say that we will miss Sergeant Anea in his new role as he moves on. So anyway, that is all. Thank you, mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rosie. Rosie, as you're promoted to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, council. I just have a few different comments on a couple of different item subjects. I've made some observations these last few meetings, and the biggest being that some of this council just doesn't care. You sat there and listened to citizens making passionate pleas. It's clear that you have your minds made up on how you're going to vote, no matter how many citizens make public comments opposing you. On the other hand, maybe you aren't listening. That was evident when Vice Mayor Diaz asked a question that had already been discussed during a presentation, I think, and I'm sure that others would agree, that the councils should be prohibited from using their texting devices for the duration of the meetings. I thought it was interesting that a day before the goal-setting meeting, councilmember Clovin posted about proposing a public safety parcel tax to be directly used to fund the police. Imagine my surprise when Vice Mayor Diaz brought up that exact same thing at the goal-setting meeting. Interesting. Lastly, it would be self-civilized to get answers to direct questions posted on public pages. Why are three councilmembers trying to kill the CBCA? Do you have someone waiting in the wings who wants to take over? Why? I'm a lifelong Bay Area native, the last 25 years in Clayton. I, for one, would stop volunteering for any organization that is in cahoots with killing the CBCA. Please start caring about what your citizens want. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Frank. Frank, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
So glad the last citizen brought up this insane idea that there's some other organization that plans to, quote, "kill" the CBCA, take over the concerts, take over the events. It goes further than that. I've been looking at a lot of the public comments. One planning commissioner, a sitting planning commissioner, who is listening to rumors and keeps talking about a certain citizen with, quote, "a criminal past," who is friends with Diaz and myself. I've been listening to this, and in fact, another citizen who just spoke, who wants to know all your conflicts of interest. Again, I spoke with that citizen, and the same question was asked. They are talking about councilman, former councilman Joe Medrano. This insane accusation where the typical stereotype of Latino men were all criminals, drug dealers, and bribed government officials. There is, there are so many comments coming from a sitting planning commissioner and somebody else that the concerts were taken away from Geller to be given to Joe Medrano. Laugh all you want, it's a fact. Laugh all you want, and it is racist. It is very racist. The Latino community is offended. I am offended as a Latino man. Joe Medrano did his time, but for anyone to make these wild accusations and perpetuating the stereotype is offensive. A toda la comunidad latina.
I'm not sure.
Our next speaker is Scott. Scott, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hey, guys, thank you for the time to speak, I really appreciate it. I have to speak pretty quickly here in order to get everything in, so please bear with me. First point is, as we discussed last time, city staff should be renegotiating the contracts with the CBCA, not CBCA members. That includes everybody on this council. Also, an independent report just came out indicating that we are completely short-staffed and that the staff we do have is overworked and underpaid. Jeff, you want to ignore the findings of this report because you think you know better. The report shows that lots of hiring needs to be done in order to run the city more effectively. Jeff, you're indicating that we don't need to hire anybody, and the staff needs to work even harder while even shutting down offices just so that they can catch up. Once again, just putting a Band-Aid on long-term problems. That way, you don't have to be the one to clean up all these bad ideas. Jeff, you indicated at the last meeting that nothing got done in 2021 and 2020, 2022. Allow me to take a deep breath. We, this might take a bit, so forgive me, but we appealed regional and local housing allocations. We addressed public safety concerns with Key Lock and Keller Ridge. We approved the Diablo Meadows development. We formally opposed SB 9. We hired a consultant. We held community workshops and other engagements while completing our housing element. We supported a grant funding application for the police. Big one for me, we increased library hours and worked out a service agreement for library support with Contra Costa County. Yay. Approved outdoor cannabis cultivation. Approved the Oak Creek Canyon project. Approved an extension of the Olivia entitlements. Adopted a general fund reserve policy. Developed and implemented Clayton Cares program to support Clayton residents and businesses suffering from the pandemic. That's another great one, guys. Developed and implemented an initiative that provides additional bonus and hero pay to Clayton first responders. Another great one. Good job again, guys. Upgraded Hoyer Hall AV to allow community opportunities to attend council meetings in person or on Zoom. Initiated an SRI study regarding a potential tax measure. Reviewed operations and future recommendations for concerts in the Grove. Evaluated opportunities for the downtown parcel. Updated the master fee schedule. Established a community facility district for Diablo Meadows. Approved a preliminary design of street feasibility plan for Pine Hollow. Advocated for Clayton's best interest in bar redistricting proposal. Developed and approved the concept for Financial Sustainability Committee of Citizens. Approved the energy services contract with Climatech. And finally, whoo, hired a new police chief. It's a lot to get done for someone who said not much got done. Sorry to be losing Sergeant Anea. We also recently lost our former police chief, you know, largely because we can't provide them with the opportunities they have elsewhere. Frank, you make me laugh every week. Thank you for that, brother. Thanks for your time, guys.
Mayor Juan, our next speaker is Terry. Terry, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, council. I also have several topics for your consideration. First, it's a conflict of interest for council members that our CBCA members to be a part of the CBCA city contract negotiations. This contract is between the city and the CBCA. The council is a governing and oversight body, and even Mayor Juan has suggested, quote, "The council doesn't negotiate." Please do the right thing for the community and do not continue to insert yourself into city staff matters and create a further perception of intertwined operations between the CBCA and the city. Second, I'd like for the council to consider terminating all master agreements with all vendors to the city. Does this sound ridiculous? It was meant to. The council has yet to look at our finances in a holistic manner, assessing opportunities for additional revenue and cost-cutting options. Instead, it singled out a single contract and a single group without any data or prioritization as to whether this is the most worthwhile opportunities to exist. Why don't you look at the city finances in a holistic manner? This has been asked of you several times by myself and others. Third, the now-departed city manager and city finance manager spent several meetings in 2022, most of which I've attended or listened to on recording, trying to help the council to understand the inefficiencies and resource challenges that have been affecting the cities and the ability that the staff has to run our city effectively. Now you also have a study from a third-party consultant, which was a request from councilmember Diaz to have this third-party consultant come in and look at our staffing resources. And they've come back and said that we, that there's significant inefficiencies that need to be, or should be considered and addressing. But two of the council members outwardly said that you intend to ignore the police from the staff. You've asked them to bring opportunities for each department, yet every, each year their voices go unheard while you ask them to work longer and harder hours and offer lip service only. Please stop running our city into the ground. Most of the residents have no idea how bad the situation's gotten, and the fact that some of you go on social media and paint an alternative picture is just despicable. Lastly, Jeff, you recently sent this forum and on social media, but nothing got done in the last two years, and so much is getting done now. Scott just read you a list of the 2021 and 22 accomplishments. I've looked this year, I've looked at the 2023 agenda documents, and what I can see that you've done this year so far is discuss the concept, work on a solar project with O-Curse, which has since gone dormant. Adopted support for our neighborhood voices despite significant resistance from residents. Terminated the CBCA contract despite significant resistance from residents. So the council majority, you're elected to represent the residents of Clayton, not your personal agenda. We're watching you, and we're holding you accountable. Thank you.
Mayor Juan, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Thank you.
One just went up, if we want to take it.
Please.
Roy, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, a lot was just sad, quite a bit. There were the gentleman prior to the, the speaker who just spoke a second ago outlining a number of things that were achieved, accomplished. He forgot one major one last year, or that, the year before that, and before that, that the budget's in the red. That's an accomplishment, that's an achievement, a pejorative negative achievement, but it's a reality. Now, with respect to contracts, there's a lot being said about contracts. We live in a marketplace, and, 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 and given that marketplace, contracts are subject to refresh, so to speak. They're subject to renegotiation. That's a business reality, whether, you know, with whatever agent one works with, et cetera. It's a standard business practice, period. And from what I gather, the CBSA contract has been in place for, what, over 10 years? 15 years? Something to that effect? Again, contracts are not static, static. They need to reflect, represent the realities of the marketplace today. And typically, contracts are triggered, the renegotiation of contracts is typically triggered by two reasons. One, it's an imperfect contract, contract, imperfect contract, or changed circumstances, including governmental, regulatory, competitive marketplace dynamics, et cetera. So there's a lot of words being spent, and own up, period. The city, you know, the, you know, the CBSA does not, it's an entity, it's a supplier, and the contract needs to be renegotiated. It's an old contract. And so therefore, deal with it. Own up to it. It's that simple. Try to renegotiate if you had a contract and you just keep putting it off 14, 15 years. So anyway, that's it, okay? This is getting old, it's getting tired, it's trite. Deal with reality. It's a marketplace, it's business, it's about business. The CBSA, you know, they, they, they work with the city. Own up, simply, and it's really getting trite, totally unnecessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Janet, do we have anyone else on the line?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Thank you. Is, I think there's some sound coming from over here, if you want to. There's some sound coming from here somewhere.
I'm not on.
All right.
I can't even get on the internet.
All right. Okay, well, I will close a public comment and move on to the consent calendar. There is one comment on consent calendar, item 4D. So if we can pull that for a moment, and if any other items would like to be pulled from consent. If not, if we could have a motion excluding item 4D. Wait, what's that? Oh, yes, that's right. Okay, let's go ahead and just take a public comment and consent calendar. Item is 4D for Glenn Miller.
It's the same.
I don't. Yeah, me neither. It's not for so.
Just for official, my name is Glenn Miller, 1005 Pebble Beach Drive. 4D, I believe, has to do with the NPDES, which is the kind of a stormwater tax that we pay, excuse me, stormwater tax that we pay. And first of all, I'd like to applaud the council for starting to take a look at some of these taxes, not just as a pay 'em, pass through, and not do anything. And that's what's happened with this one. I know, I, first of all, Glenn Miller, nice to meet you. I understand you're a public works guy, so you'll kind of understand this. I have experience in contracting, have experience with best management practices, all those kinds of things that need to do, need to be done for getting NPDES certifications and all that kind of stuff, SWPPPs and all that stuff. We don't do this here. We haven't done it for a long, long time. And in fact, a couple of times, I've noticed that the 29,000-something just gets stuffed to the end, and then all of a sudden magically disappears. And perfect example of this is on December 30th, I sent this memo with this picture, and this is the interface with the jihad, which we'll talk about later, and the stormwater system that protects Clayton Road. Nothing was done. Nothing whatsoever was done. Nothing was done. So we had basically a waterfall and a nice slide, and unfortunately, I get the fact that it was the holiday season and we had no maintenance people around, but there was no straw waddles, anything that you would expect a reasonable stormwater prevention plan to have been put in place. Our maintenance department is incompetent, I'm sorry, and doesn't, doesn't really care. So I, and then I see by the audit, oh, the 29,000's still there, and then magically disappears. So I applaud Jeff and some of your others to kind of take a look. You need to get it, before you pass something, get a defined scope of work, make sure you know what's done, and then have some accountability to make sure that this stuff is done, so we don't have what we had. And I'm telling you, as a contractor, I would have been hauled in, hauled and fined like crazy for what the city did in just on that little part of Clayton Road. And we can't have that. So before you pass this, I think you ought to take a look at the scope of work, make sure you know what the scope of work it is, and then, you know, apply the funds. Go, go for it. I'm not, I'm not unhappy paying the funds. I just want it to go to where it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comment on the consent calendar? Janet?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay, I would like to talk about 4D, so if we could, I would like to pull that for, from the vote, and we can, if we could have a motion on the other items.
Move approval except for 4D.
I'll second.
Did you ask if you're pulling items?
Yes.
I want 4F.
4F also. Okay. Would you like to amend the motion to pull 4F?
amend to move approval except for 4D and 4F.
Excellent.
And I will second it.
All right, Janet, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Trupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. All right, so items A, B, C, and E pass. We can talk about them in order. I did read the staff report for 4D, and I'm trying to pull it out, but I'm having some issues, connectivity issues here. That's okay. I guess, I don't know if Larry, if you are prepared to speak about this item. I do think it is important to describe what this is actually doing in terms of the fee assessment, the scope of what it covers and what it does not cover. And maybe you could elaborate a little bit, and that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Good evening, councillor. Larry Thies, city engineer. In general, your question, mayor, this is a stormwater utility use assessment. It has been in place for at least two decades. What it is, I'm not exactly sure which date it was passed, but some 20 years ago. It is assessed against each parcel generally across the county. What this particular process is, the city does not specifically administer or collect this tax, where in other assessment districts the city does. This is collected countywide. There's a countywide clean water program, and as part of that process annually, in each jurisdiction has set different rates slightly. And at this point, the city of Clayton's maximum amount is $29 per unit. Other cities are in that same range, usually generally between $25 and $35 in other jurisdictions. And then, as part of this countywide process, it requires each city to make, approve a resolution. That resolution is then submitted back to the countywide clean water program, and then they are able to then put that on the assessment roll for each property within Clayton, and then there's respective ones for other cities. Almost every city within the county participates in this program, and this is done basically on the annual process. Now, in general, the, the fees collected for addressing stormwater-related items, in particular- in particular pollution prevention, um, so the nexus for that is because there's a, a state regional water quality control board, um, any stormwater that, that is discharged basically back into the waters of the US, um, is required to have a permit. So, pretty much every jurisdiction that has a stormwater system has to get this permit. And so, those permits are generally issued, um, on a county-by-county basis, and so we participate in a, um, collective county group that negotiates that permit, so it applies to pretty much every city within Contra Costa County. A portion of this assessment goes to help pay for the collective program, and then the remaining dollars from the assessment return back to the, um, the city. And then those funds are still required to, um, be associated with, um, clean water activities. Um, there is staff that has to attend these meetings, participate, be current on the permit. There's many different elements of this permit, which I won't get into at this point, but, um, essentially, any new development, um, treating existing issues like mercury runoff, those are kinda the things that come up, and, uh, we have to participate, um, either a city staff member or myself, as the consultant to the city, participates in that program, and, um, also, uh, has to then administer the requirements of that permit within the jurisdiction. So hopefully that addresses the general nature of the, um, the, the assessment, and if you have any specific questions, I can try to address them.
Sure. So, so then, just interpreting the materials that are included, it appears that the total assessment for the residence, for the parcels in Clayton, that twenty-nine dollar per, per parcel adds up to approximately a hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and twenty-seven, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Of that amount, thirty-two thousand is paid to the county for this permit, and the remainder amount, and, and this is, this is using the twenty-three, FY twenty-three year, for example purposes, the remainder amount of approximately ninety-five thousand dollars comes back to the city, and then the city uses these funds to do what?
So, you're correct, that's on the, the chart that you're looking at as part of the packet. Um, just to provide a caveat, um, this is based on an assumed number of parcels. Obviously, if there's more development in particular, I mean, this jurisdiction doesn't have a, a lot of new parcels, but, um, it's based off basically last year's, um, parcel count. So we'll adjust slightly.
Could use it for discussion purposes.
Yeah, but it's, it's pretty close for a community like Clayton, where there's not a lot of major development going on every year. Um, but of the return-to-source dollars, approximately ninety-five thousand, um, that is part of, I believe, um, storm, uh, there's a particular fund, the Stormwater Utility Assessment or Stormwater Fund, which is Fund Two One Six, I believe, and there's an accounting, you'll see that in the budget. Um, the breakdown of those dollars that come in, um, include, there's automatic, um, payments to cover the cost of your annual permit, which is roughly, it goes up every year, but my guess is it's around eleven thousand dollars a year. Um, there's also, the city, along with all the other cities, um, utilizes the central Contra Costa sanitary district for stormwater inspections of businesses, so there's some dollars there. So, off the top, roughly about twenty thousand goes to programs that are administered by, um, outside entities and that are collectively negotiated, um, with the clean water program. Um, the remaining dollars, um, help, the majority probably goes toward the funding of the staff person or in myself now participating in the program. In monthly meetings, um, there's twice-a-month meetings for both management level and a, what they call a committee level. Clayton is currently, um, with the development committee, um, and then there's also reporting requirements every year that the city has to submit a annual report on its, um, any, essentially, what developments have come in to, uh, have been entitled, have been built in the last year, what new stormwater facilities are, have been, um, constructed, and how are those going to be monitored going forward. Um, there are, you know, like anything, um, if there's particular violations, um, an illicit discharge, those have to be reported annually. So there is, um, it's mostly staff costs, however, there could be nexus, um, in terms of, um, maintenance-related activities that are specifically for stormwater-related, um, tasks. So, cleaning of ditches, inlets, the storm drain system is certainly a nexus of that type of, um, use of that fee.
Okay, thank you. Has, um, okay, well, I mean, I think that's a, that's a fair explanation. Would we see the activity in the, would we see the maintenance activity as a function of inter-fund transfer for the time worked, uh, performing maintenance related to stormwater?
Um, so, anticipating some of these questions may come up, I believe the current, um, budget for this fiscal year, there's actually two components of where those dollars are spent. There are dollars that are allocated specifically to salary and benefits. Generally, those are probably for in-house employees related to maintenance, so those dollars are, um, related to maintenance activities. There is a transfer of roughly forty-two thousand dollars from this fund back into the general fund. That was, um, intended to cover the time of prior, it was the assistant city, assistant to the city manager that performed a lot of the duties related to the, the attending the meetings, overseeing the program. So that, those are probably the, um, sort of labor costs related to this particular fund. One is directly in the fund, another is transferred back, cause that particular position is paid through general fund, so it's basically supplementing that particular, um, time for that, um, position.
Okay, thank you. And much like the GAD, uh, we'll talk about it later, but you have a diagram later that outlines the scope, the coverage area. Is there a similar, um, coverage? I didn't see it in the, in the packet. Is there a similar coverage map that shows the, where the, the stormwater-related work would be performed, or what is covered under, or what would be eligible to spend on?
Essentially, everything within the city is part of, you know, the stormwater area, um, so the city has responsibility to everything within its jurisdiction. Clearly, the city has responsibilities for within, what's within public right-of-way or their own parcels, but there's still requirements related to private parcels that the city has to, um, for example, when a subdivision, a new subdivision comes in, um, there's, you know, it's not that new now, but twenty years ago, they started implementing s- other stormwater utility, um, mitigations that are required beyond just putting the water directly into a storm drain pipe. Now you have to clean it, so to speak, beforehand. Those facilities, like Diablo Meadows is a good example, have to put a basin in that the water percolates through the basin first, and then it's, takes out the pollutants, and then it goes into the stormwater system, which is essentially going into a creek out to the bay. Um, and then the city is then required to monitor those every year, make sure they are not filling up too much, they're not, or they're not operating properly. Generally, those basins, in most cases, were, would be overseen by the HOA of that particular development. But sometimes in other cases, the city has responsibility for the, those particular basins. So, the city has overall jurisdiction, as long as within the city, and anything that's eventually getting to the waters of the US is sort of eligible, which is, you know, pretty much everything is draining downhill from here, that it would be, um, the nexus of that particular, um, assessment. So, if it rains, hits the ground, how you, how you address it is pretty much within the scope of that permit.
Okay, thank you. What, what happens when there's overlap between the GAD area and the stormwater area?
That's a great question.
If it's like, if there's a V-dig that is within the GAD, it could theoretically be covered by either, um, funding source? Is that accurate?
I think it, it is within the, um, there's a nexus for both of them. Uh, you could decide which one has priority, certainly, in terms of the funding, but, um, I don't know, you know, obviously, the history of how the city has utilized the stormwater utility fund, um, in the past, but it could have, you know, covered, um, activities related to stormwater within the GAD. Um, you know, without digressing too much, I know the GAD item's coming up, but the GAD's essentially main purpose is to make sure it addresses geologic hazards. So it has, that's the nexus for the GAD. So, generally, the biggest nexus for that situation is addressing water and drainage, because those are the things that trigger landslides. So, as long as it's water-related, so to speak, in a GAD, that, that's sort of meets the nexus. Obviously, you know, I'm not getting into every detail here, but same thing with the stormwater, you know, so they have a crossover in terms of the, uh, the, the type of issue it's meant to address.
Okay. Um, thank you. Is there any other comments on four D? Any questions on four D?
Can you just walk me through where, you were talking about the water being treated, um, the stormwater being treated? Where does that happen?
Okay, so, um, every jurisdiction's different. Um, in newer jurisdictions or newer development, uh, water, you know, I'll go back basic, right? If you flush your toilet or water coming out of your house goes into a sewer line, that goes into the sewer system. The water that's on the road or, um, that's in an open field that's getting picked up and going in the street, that doesn't generally get treated. It doesn't go to the sewer system, it will get into a storm drain pipe. Eventually, that storm drain pipe will outlet into, more likely in this area, Mount Diablo Creek that runs right down the middle of Clayton. Then that water eventually goes through Concord all the way out to the bay. Because there is, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, some thirty years ago, you know, really wanted to address, cause there's trash, there's, you know, there's everything that comes into these, and there's no treatment. It, it, a counter example for, is like San Francisco, the water in, generally in the streets will go into the storm, uh, go into the sewer system, and they treat it that way because of the way they set it up. So, but most jurisdictions, not that way. So since then, um, there has been, um, measures that have been put in place under what's called Section C three, um, that, under new development going forward, that water that is coming off, you know, you, say you had an open field, now you put ten houses on it and you put a street on it, that water that's coming off that development needs to go to what's called a bio-retention basin, is one type of treatment, but it's the main type of treatment. The water goes there, um, to then filter through, you know, a sandy-type material, you know, so the material is well-drained enough, the water will go through, it won't, you know, just create a pond, but then the particulates, the oils, all that stuff gets stuck in the sand, and then the water is cleaned, and there's usually a pipe at the bottom of this basin, then goes into the creek. That type of, um, treatment is now required for pretty much any development that's over a certain size, um, which is now getting smaller and smaller. The next component that's most recently come up, cause there's now been the, we're on the third regional permit, um, for Contra Costa, it's now starting to treat areas that already run off into the, you know, an existing street, like Clayton Road, water running off right directly into the, you know, the storm drain that goes into the creek. It's called a green infrastructure plan, where you need to start now treating existing facilities on a, you know, small scale, but it's very costly, cause you need the space to treat it before it goes into the creek. So those are now kinda ramping up, where it was basically like, I don't know the best way of saying it, but existing facilities that were initially kinda grandfathered in the first couple permits, in saying, well, new development, you address it. Like you'll see in a lot of new shopping centers, the way the parking lot drains is now, instead of into just, um, an inlet, it'll drain to the center where there's, there's this landscaped area. You'll see it in any new development in the last fifteen years. And that's a very common thing, and so those are the type of treatment facilities that, it's basically called source control. You, you address it at the point where it's getting, before it gets into the system, as opposed to a collective treating it all at the, you know, at the very end. And, um, then it puts it on, the onus on pretty much each new developer as they come along.
Thank you. So then, in looking at the agenda, it, it looks like the recommendation is to keep it at twenty-nine dollars per ERU, and that hasn't changed in the last twenty-four years, is what I think I read. So given that it's more costly now and that it has to be treated at the source, I know that the developers are taking it on, but I'm like, thinking of the Clayton Road, um, example you just gave, why would we not increase that?
Uh, well, you can't without going for another vote.
Okay.
The Contra Costa County as a whole, I forgot exactly what year, I think it's probably about ten years ago, went for a, a increase to this, um, and it did not pass countywide. So, um, the clean water program will have to look at trying to, um, do another's measure and have it pass in order to increase it, but essentially, this is, the way it was set up originally was with a cap.
Okay. It just threw me off, cause as I said, staff recommends no increase, like we had control over it. That's why I was asking.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
I love the unfunded mandates the state puts down on the, our, our lovely little city, um, and, uh, thank you for describing the challenges that we face. I was just curious, and, and, and first of all, I, I understand, uh, that you've taken over, uh, for our former assistant city manager, to the city manager who's doing that from many years prior. Quick question, have we ever been found out of compliance, to your knowledge, with our reporting efforts?
I, I am not aware, um, specifically of it, out of...
I'm, I'm, I'm asking if this, the state or some other, uh, regulatory entity has found Clayton out of compliance?
No, I, I don't believe so, but I, I admit I have not looked through all the records, so, but I'm not aware of any, um, a out-of-compliance notice by the state. Generally, the annual report goes in, in September timeframe, and then it's accepted by the state late that year, and I don't believe there has been a, um, a point where they've not, um, accepted the report. I, I would say that the, every city has, um, um, situations where there might be an illicit discharge, that does happen, um, and it might not be the city's particular fault, you know? I, when I used to work in Ciudad Verinda, um, you have a development and for, or say just a, a business that oil can, you know, spilled open, goes into the gutter, you have to report it. That's the main thing, you report it, you, you, you let everyone know about that issue. Um, so illicit discharges do happen, so I, I would, you know, say there's two components, you know? One is, is the city as a whole out of compliance with its permit requirements? I'm not aware of that, that it's, that it's been the case, but has there been violations or notice of violations? That's probably occurred.
Just acknowledging that, uh, we are in similar challenges to all of our sister cities around who have to deal with these unfunded mandates, and it's very challenging, and I appreciate your effort.
So, just one other comment. So in the staff report, um, just talking about the remainder funds after all the other adminisures described, it says, "The majority of return-to-source funds, approximately sixty-six thousand dollars, are spent on staff, city, engineer, labor costs, yourself, performing maintenance activities required by the program, storm drain inspection, cleaning, creek clearing, responding to spill calls." Do we have anything more than that in regards to what activities were performed under the program, um, in any recent time period? Like, I, I understand the description of scope that is included, but do we, is there like, in the report that we provide, cause you mentioned that there's like an annual report, do we provide, does it include like, a description of what was done and when, or is that more like, just a, a report over compliance? Because we are doing something, I, it's just not clear what it actually is from the report itself.
Do you mean the annual report that we submit through to the state?
Yes.
I, I would say in general, and, uh, you know, I preface, I have not prepared Clayton's one, um, as of yet, so this will be my first year for Clayton's. Last year was already prepared by in-house staff. But in general, the, the report does not get into every, it does not, it, it does not account for like, every dollar spent related to particular activity. It does not get that granular. It does not get that granular. It has very specific sections that you need to report on, and, you know, like new development, that's a, a very specific, that's the one probably changes the most, because, you know, someone built, you know, a new subdivision. And then there's efforts, you know, it's not just cleaning trash out of the, you know, storm water, there's a lot of different chemicals that you have to report on now. Clayton as a community is not, doesn't have much industrial use, but other communities within Contra Costa certainly do, like PCBs or mercury and these type of things. So that's another part of the reporting. But I would not say that the annual report goes through the, the level of detail of exactly how you accounted for every dollar. That's not that purpose of that report. I would say in terms of the budget, and certainly you could probably pull what the expenditures related to that particular fund, and then make an association as to, you know, what it was spent on. That would be my first approach to looking at the, how the, the funds were used. Okay, thank you. Any other comments on 4D? Okay, you also want to pull for F?
I wanted to request on...
Hold on, hold on one second.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, say again? Actually, yeah, that's a good idea. Can we table the 4F? Because I do, we do have several students on in, for the Do the Right Thing program? We can do that? Yes, we will. Yes, we will get to it. Okay, so if we're all, if we're all okay with that, I will...
I didn't hear what you said.
Sure. I will, I will speak into the mic as clear as I can. We are going to table the remainder of the consent calendar in lieu of advancing to 5A, and that is the certificates of recognition to public schools for Do the Right Thing. Thank you for reminding me after that extended discussion. So with that, I will turn it over to Councilmember Clovan to introduce this item.
And Janet, if you could promote Principal Fong and Sanchez, that'd be great. This is the time we get to recognize our Do the Right Thing program. And as a quick reminder, we have been recognizing this program since 2010, when the Mayor Hank Stratford, CBCA, and our schools got together and agreed these principles really important to us. We, we recognize students based on certain character traits, and this month's trait is self-discipline, and I've asked each of the teachers to get, I mean, the principals to get their teachers and, and find out students who best embody those traits. And I believe we have Principal Sanchez up. Is that who is on there? Excellent.
If I may interrupt for a moment, if anyone from Mount Diablo Elementary is on Zoom, if you can please raise your hand so I can promote you to panelists, that would be appreciated.
And this program has been going on, again, we started in 2010, so we're 13 years now, and it's, it's a delight to our, our meetings as we recognize these students and show what awesome citizens they are, and, and as the teachers recognize them. So Principal Sanchez, do we see any of your students up? I think we have a couple of hands.
I'm wondering if they maybe fell asleep.
They probably fell asleep in the last conversation. That's why I, I, I appreciate that.
Oh, no, not at all, but I just know that it's, I think I see Luca there. I was not calling comments boring at all. I was just saying it's kind of late for elementary school, so Luca, I'm so glad.
Look at the eight o'clock timeframe, I understood that.
I apologize.
All right, you're on, please.
Okay. So I am reading for Ms. Jennifer Blazer, who does apologize for not being here, and let's see. Luca is a great representation of character, of the character trait self-discipline. Luca makes great choices in class. He leads his classmates by example, by always being, by always being hardworking, dependable, and responsible. Luca understands when it is appropriate, when it is an appropriate time to be silly and fun, and when it's the appropriate time to be concentrating and learning, even when sitting next to one of his best friends in class. Luca can always be counted on to get his coursework done on time. He has a great attitude about school. He is helpful and kind to everyone. He always has a great big smile on his face. Wait, where'd it go? Put it back on there. There it is. He deserves to be recognized for his self-discipline and all of his outstanding achievements in school this year. Congratulations.
Luca, thank you, and then thank you, Principal Sanchez. Luca, congratulations, that is awesome. You sound like an awesome dude, and I'd like to meet you sometime. I mean, to be able to sit next to your best friend and have that type of discipline in class, that's amazing. We have a certificate, we have signed, and you can come pick it up, and we're looking forward to meeting you in person at some point.
And then I see Malia Hill is also on.
Go for it.
Okay. Malia, I apologize, Ms., Ms. Ilse has asked me to read for you as well. Malia sets the bar high in our classroom. She is always listening, always following directions, while striving to do her best and complete assignments. In third grade, we discuss self-control and what it looks like in the classroom and on the playground. Naturally, throughout the year, reminders are needed for everyone, but Malia really ever needs them. She is such a pleasure to have in class. She is self-disciplined, and we are so proud of Ms. Malia. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wow, Malia, it sounds like Ms. Hill really likes having you in her class. Congratulations, it's awesome to see you. And again, you'll have a certificate, it's, it's all assigned, and we're looking forward to giving that to you. Congratulations. And I really thank you for having that self-discipline, and I thank you, Principal Sanchez, and your teachers for coming up with these wonderful students, and it looks like our future's bright. Thank you. And with that, is Principal Fong on? There he is. Greetings. Excellent. Are there any students that are in the room that could raise their hand, so we can promote them?
I know I have Ethan Ruff, and he's here, or was here.
I'm looking for it. I don't see either Ethan or Kenley.
Oh, there he is. There's Ethan.
Awesome.
Hi, Ethan. And then Kenley, I'm wondering if her electricity is out, because I did try calling and, oh, no, there she is.
Wonderful. All right. Tell us about Ethan and Kenley.
All right, well, I'm going to put them together. So I'm just going to say, to me, self-discipline is about doing the right thing even when no one else is looking. That's kind of how I define it. So the two students that I have here are Ms. Kenley Kick and Mr. Ian Ruff. They both exemplify that trait. They're both extremely self-disciplined, and they hold themselves to high standards for both their behavior as well as their academics. I've never had to talk to either one about their behavior choices, and conversely, they're both incredible students who pull As in most, if not all, of their classes. Their teachers report that they're, never have to talk to them either in class in terms of their behavior, and that they're really good about staying on top of their schoolwork, and both serve as excellent role models. And one of their teachers said that especially when there's substitutes, they're very helpful, and, you know, anybody who's been with middle schoolers knows that sometimes when we have substitutes, things don't always go as planned, but for these two, they do. So please join me congratulating Mr. Ethan Ruff and Ms. Kenley Kick.
Yay!
Kenley and Ethan, it's amazing, middle school is a fun place, I remember well, my, my daughter's now in high school, but it's, it's a challenging place, and for you to have self-discipline, and be recognized by your teachers and your principals, I congratulate you both, and I'm looking forward to your getting your certificates, which are signed by the five city council members, and I'm looking forward to seeing you in the future. Thank you very much. Until next time.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We actually do have one public comment on this item, item five, if Janet Easton would like to make a comment.
Yes, when I first heard of this program, I thought it was a great thing, because in the corporate world, our company had done something very similar, and it was a very successful program. When it first started, I think it was Hank Stratford, that it was his brainchild, and I thought, I, I did not think at the time that it was limited just to children, and I think we should encourage adults to be recognized for those same traits. I also think that all of the traits should be open to everyone all of the time, because sometimes you have somebody who's done something wonderful, but that doesn't happen to be the one that's on the, the banner out there on Clayton Road. So I would like you all to consider opening it to everyone all the time for all the traits that we look for in our good citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I, I, I think that's awesome.
Would you like to make a comment on the Unsung Heroes program?
Yeah, there, there is an Unsung, Unsung Heroes program, and that also recognizes those traits in, in adults, and I'll make sure that I kick that off and get that more announced, so that...
It gives the kids somebody to look up to, to see that adults do the same thing. It gives them like, somebody that they want to be like.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Okay, and with that, I will bring us back to item 4F, and on the table is still 4D, so Vice Mayor Diaz.
Thank you. I want to first thank the Chief and the Police Department for pursuing an item to assist in the improvement of our traffic enforcement, which seems to be one of the major complaints that we receive on a regular basis. In the report, though, it alludes to a much deeper program on how he's going to address the, the traffic enforcement section, although not now, but would like a full report from the Chief in the future on specifically what he plans to do to address that. It's in the report, and it just seems like we're putting the cart before the horse on this one, so, thank you.
Any other comment on item 4F? Okay, then I would entertain a motion for the remainder items on the consent calendar 4D and 4F.
Move approval on 4D and 4F?
I'll second.
Janet, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Chupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Clovan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Aye. With that, it passes, I would encourage that when we, it would be, it would behoove us to have a, a more robust detail of what is actually spent within stormwater, so I think we could take that up during the time that we look at the next year's budget. Okay, and with that, we move on to item six, reports from our city manager and staff.
Mayor and City Council, I have nothing to report this week.
Okay, thank you. We've had a, we've had a busy week, so I'm sure we'll get to it in, in the council reports. Next is item 7A, is adopt a resolution approving Endeavor Hall nonprofit rental fees. Interim City Manager Bernal, if you would like to kick us off?
Certainly. Mayor and members of the City Council, this item was brought to you at the last City Council meeting, where we were considering the nonprofit rate for Endeavor Hall. This was in response to a contract with the Clayton Theater Company that had expired, and in an effort to create a fee that would be easily understood by all of the nonprofits, and also by the staff that would be administering those, we brought forward a, a schedule of fees that would be charged to the nonprofits. They range from no fee at all, or 100% reduction for nonprofits that gross $10,000 per year or less, for a maximum of three days per year. Another rate would be for nonprofits that gross between $10,000 and $150,000 per year, which would receive an 80% reduction in the nonprofit rate. And then the third tier was over $150,000 per year in gross revenue, and that would be a 50% reduction in the nonprofit rate. So the, the report shows the, the old fees, it shows the, the new fees as proposed. There's a resolution attached. This is a public hearing, so this has been noticed to the public, since we are changing our fee schedule through this process, if council votes for this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
The one question that I have is, because our master fee schedule is under review right now, is there a potential for these rates to change again in May, when we look at the proposed master fee schedule?
Yes, there is that possibility. We're doing, in the, in the fee study, we're looking at all of the costs that go into these facilities and services we provide. It hasn't been done in a few years, so those rates will likely change when we bring that back to you.
Okay, and I think in our last discussion, we said the cost for upkeep of Endeavor Hall was about $75,000 a year, and Vice Mayor Diaz, didn't you say that your recommendation was at least to get us to, with depreciation, to a 50% threshold?
Yes, that's an accurate recollection.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I just had a comment that I want to add before we get to, I think, a more in-depth discussion. You know, this was, this was an item that was raised, and I'll, I'll talk about it later in the, in the evening, but this was an item that was raised in discussion that I had directly with CW Wolf as part of our CBCA discussion, and it did seem like something that was, was an, an item of interest. And I think, given the nature of Endeavor, how it was, or is, a fairly historical building, and has a specific meaning to the, to the community, in lieu of the discussions that we had, and as a gesture of goodwill, I would recommend that we, instead of doing the three-tier system, we move to a two-tier system and eliminate the, the highest tier. And, and that way, we would make it so you'd have the one tier at the $10,000 rate, below which it would be unchanged, and then all others would receive what was, what is currently being displayed as the second tier. And I think, you know, if it turns out in the future that we need to modify that for any reason, then we can do so at that time, but I think now, in combination with, you know, the discussions that we've had, and, you know, simply as a gesture of goodwill that we, that we do that. So that would be my, my suggestion, and we can continue with questions and then take comments, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had, just a generic question. What exactly does the rental fee provide, other than them getting access to the building? If staff could elaborate.
So the rental fee provides the, the service that's provided to prepare the, the facility for use by the, by the group, the permit that's issued in order for them to use it, the staff that then would go out and make sure that it's attended to during the time that people are utilizing the facility, and then cleaning up after, after the event is over.
Okay. I just, I was just curious if, if it involved maintenance, having to do any additional work, or whether or not it's just a base rate to rent it, and then the, the people who actually rent it are responsible for cleaning themselves. So it sounds like a, a member in the audience is saying they clean themselves, so I was just curious. Thank you. Did Director Eiers want to add?
That's correct.
More? Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? Okay. One moment, please. I will then open up the item for public comment. If there's anyone that has public comment on this item, you could either, actually, I have one speaker card, so that is what this is. So first, first on the list is Janet Easton. Please, go ahead. And if there's anyone else has comment, you will be next.
One comment is that, yes, it is a historical building. It was built by Joel Clayton for his wife when she finally made it to Clayton because she was a Methodist and she wanted her own Methodist church. It was subsequently closed as a Methodist church when Mrs. Clayton left and the Christian Endeavor Society purchased the building. And that's how it became Endeavor Hall. I think that it's obvious that somebody went to a lot of work to put together that fee schedule. And I do agree with what you had said to combine the second two tiers. But it's cause, it looks like it's going to cause a lot of work for your staff because you'll have to require paperwork to verify that somebody is, in fact, a nonprofit organization and what their gross income is. That, that's not something that's easily laid hands on. And it might cause some extra work for your staff. Also, you don't have anything there about insurance verification. And the one time that I did rent the hall, I was required to get my own insurance policy. But later in the agenda items, it talks about the playing fields. And there was a reference made to, the city has a, an agreement with some insurance company that they will, the city will provide insurance through their company for whatever happens there. Is that true? I mean, or do you provide the same thing for Endeavor Hall? That if someone rents it, that they have to have insurance, number one. And number two, do you have some way of getting that insurance for the person? Or do they have to get it on their own?
Is that the, I, I don't want to take your time, but is that the extent of your, your public comment? Afterwards, I can refer your question to staff.
Well, I also have a comment to make on the rental of the, of the playing fields. Is that a separate agenda item?
Yes. That is not on the agenda tonight. But if it's a, if it's a general question regarding fees, that may be included in the materials.
It was, I mean, a question regarding fees. Let me go back to Endeavor Hall.
Please ask your question and then.
Okay. Endeavor Hall, there's no breakout for the kitchen and the hall itself. And I think that there is a potential for some good income for the city if you rented out the kitchen separately as a commercial kitchen, which it is, for someone to use for their home business that they started during the pandemic that now has outgrown their home. So you might want to consider splitting the two for the rental of the hall, if they want the kitchen, or the hall, or both. Because they really are separate things. My other, my thing about the, the fields, the sports fields, is the field that is at Mount Diablo Elementary School, my question is, does the city rent that out? Or does the school rent that out?
Is, is, are you referring to the elementary school, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That, that is your time, and I will refer some of your questions to staff.
Well, I want, I just wanted to know, it's, is the parking lot in, can they rent the field without the parking lot? Do they have to rent the parking lot? I live on that court, and it gets just overwhelmed if somebody doesn't, is there Saturday and Sunday with their soccer practice or whatever. And then the court just gets crazy if they don't rent that. They should have to rent the parking lot with the field. And also, I want to know who gets the income from that, whether the city does or the school district does.
Okay, thank you. If, if at this time, if you are aware of any of those answers that you could quickly address, if not, we could take those and then get back to you later.
Thank you. Mayor Juan, so I, I think I missed one of the questions, but one of the questions I know was whether the city offers insurance. And at one time, the city did. That's not a program. That's not something the city does anymore. So we are updating the facility use policy documents to make that clear, that insurance needs to be provided.
Okay, thank you.
And then the second question that I have in my notes was about the park near the elementary school. And that is the school district. That is not a city facility.
Okay. So any, any activity with that?
It was on the city map as a, as a public, a public, a city public park.
If you could send a note on where that is, then we can take a look at it. I think, to address your question directly, the city isn't involved in the rental of the facilities near the elementary school.
If I may clarify.
Sure.
The, the fields near the junior high schools are city facilities. But near the elementary school is the district.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. So now, is there any other public comment on the room, or in the room for 7A?
Yeah. Glenn Miller. As, kind of coincidentally, the construction manager for the renovation of the Endeavor Hall, I would urge you in, in your fees to make sure that you're prefacing Clayton Residence, because that was the intent. All people, all the people that I work with, the council members, the contributors, the contract, even the contractors, the staff, that, that, that was, that was the intent. We had to bring it up to code. We literally had to raise, raise it up and stick it on a foundation because it had no foundation. I think we did a good job of putting a state-of-the-art kitchen in there. I don't think it's utilized enough. And I've, I've never seen CBCA use it, but I, it seems to me that that would be kind of a cool thing for them to do. But I would urge you, when you're looking at a fee structure, to take into consideration, if it's a Clayton-based organization, to give them a break. Thank you.
Yeah, the current fee schedule does accommodate for resident versus non-resident. Janet, do we have any, please?
I'm Ed Norf with the Clayton Business and Community Center Association. I just wanted to make one comment. I really hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I just really did want to clarify. When we rent the Endeavor Hall, we rent the time it takes us to set up, and we do set up the hall by ourselves. I go get the key, I open it, we set it up, and then we pay for the time it takes us to clean it up. We take everything down. If the floor needs sweeping, we sweep the floor. We take all the garbage out. So we pay for all that time. And then I also wanted to clarify that I have put in many applications to use the hall, both privately and for nonprofit. And I put one in, in January for April and May of this year. And then I went back to see if I could withdraw those because we thought our fees might go up to a point where we couldn't really afford to be in there. And I talked to Dana about it. We emailed back and forth. And one of the problems that I came upon on the fee schedule, it says you get a certain amount back of your deposit. But nonprofits don't put in a deposit. So instead of counting that as a deposit, it was counted as a direct fee for the whole meeting. So I put in $400 for the April meeting. I was going to get back 25% of that. Although on the fee schedule, it says 25% of the deposit. I was going to get 25% of the rental fee back. And then $30 for the processing, which means I get $10 back. So it's kind of a ridiculous way of doing that because you can cancel two months ahead, and you're not getting any money back. And that doesn't happen anywhere else. So I think the mistake was made by calling it 25% of your deposit back, which works if it's a private one. That's fair, 25% back. But if it's a nonprofit, you're not going to have any money left at the end of that. And because they're using it against your rent instead of against your deposit. Does that make sense? I paid a $500 deposit when I rented it privately, but you don't pay a deposit when you do it as a nonprofit. So they were, so I, I just don't think it's clear what's going to happen when you cancel that. So I think that has to be made clear. Because now we don't know. Should we cancel that April and May? If it goes up too high, you know, stuff like that. So we'd like that clarified. Thank you.
I think that will be an action item as we revisit our fee schedule, for sure, for added clarity. And then I think the details of your specific situation can be worked out offline. If that's okay. Okay. Janet, do we have anyone online that would like to comment?
I do. CW, as you're promoted to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to thank the mayor for his suggestion here. And hopefully, the council will vote in our favor on this. This 80% is very important to the CBCA because we do utilize the Endeavor Hall. And we want to, and we have wanted to, for, in perpetuity, we wanted to call Endeavor Hall our home. It, it gives us that kind of, that town hall meeting kind of feel, and we like it there. So just to reiterate, though, something that we talked about, Jeff, as we go forward, I know you'll, you'll talk about this later. But we want to offer our consideration to those, those 501(c)(3)'s in Clayton that do not, are not able to afford the weekday rate. And we would be happy to, once you come up with your master fee rate plan, subsidize those organizations so that the city doesn't lose any money. What we're really interested in at CBCA is the weekend rate as far as this overall haircut is concerned. And we hope that, that you'll consider passing this proposal the way the mayor has just, just put it out. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mayor Juan, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Thank you. I will close public comment on this item and move to discussion. Is there anything that we would like to discuss among ourselves?
Thank you for making the suggestion to bring the CBCA's fee schedule down to the 80%, like other nonprofits?
I would clarify, it's not.
It's a suggestion, right?
It's not the CBCA's fee schedule. It's the one that applies to all entities.
And, and the reason why I, I, I thank you is because in watching social media and those who have defended the cancellation or termination of the CBCA contract, it was because why should one organization be treated any different than any other? So this isn't a great, a great example how CBCA would have been treated differently than any other organization. So keeping equity across the board seems to make sense. We treat them like any other organization. So I just thought, I like, I like bring it back down to the two, two level. And as we look forward at other contracts, again, every contract wants to be looked at the same. Just being aware of, of the equity of how we treat all contracts.
Yeah, thank you. I, I actually, one of the things that I really wanted to get from this was the, the free tier. I think it's really important that we support organizations that wouldn't otherwise be able to afford to use the facility, especially those that are smaller. So that was, that was something that I, I found important, especially when I heard various places that were getting charged different amounts. It just didn't make a lot of sense. So I, I do value the historic nature of the building and what it was intended to use for. So that is, that's completely in line with that. So I would suggest that we modify the resolution as described to collapse the, I want to word this correctly, collapse the second and third tiers into just a single tier at a single rate, or sorry, at a single discount rate for anything over the $10,000 gross revenue. And I, I forgot to address an earlier comment. The, the gross revenue numbers is a way that we can be objective. And it would not require, we would not require extensive documentation to that effect. It would essentially be an attestation. So if someone says, this is it, then I think that should be sufficient generally. And if, we, we would have the ability to do more if, if we thought it was being abused. So, so with that, that's, that's what I would suggest. We modify the resolution to read. If any, if everyone is okay with that, then I would make that motion.
I am, but first, I just want to go back to what you just said. And, and thinking about staff at the counter, and someone comes in and they want to fill out a, a permit. And once we're technologically sound and they can actually just do it online, then there is, we just have a button. I guess it says, yes, I make, I fall into this category. Is staff comfortable with that? Is, is our new front desk person going to be comfortable with somebody coming in and saying that they make this amount and this is how much they owe? I just don't want to get into an issue where there's issues at the counter with staff and taking up their time.
And just as a reference, I already do that for business permits in the city. That's how people do it. They just attest the number. So.
Would you like me to respond to that?
Yes, please.
So, so the idea would be that the, the party that would be applying for the, the hall, which would show evidence of their nonprofit status, and then would show evidence of their, their tax return or their, their gross income, and that would satisfy whatever level they would fall into. So if a nonprofit only showed their nonprofit status but didn't show the evidence of their income, then they would fall into the second tier, just by virtue of no evidence that they would be in the lower tier.
So we will be asking them, instead of just attesting to it, we will ask them for verification?
I, I think that's what you just said. I, I mean, I would be comfortable with the attestation at that level, but I would leave that to staff But I would leave that to staff to determine what the most effective way to effect that is.
I, I think what, maybe an initial evidence. And then after that, I think we're going to have a recurrence of the same folks that wouldn't have to happen over and over again. So I think maybe just the first time would be, would be fine.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
Because when we, we actually do, when I, when we renew permits online for business licenses, it is a simple attestation. That's how we do it right now. So.
But it's not necessarily true when you go in off the street to get a permit.
Yeah, a little different. Okay. And with that, then I would make that motion. And if there's a second.
I'll second.
Janet, if you would please call the roll.
Councilmember Chupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. And with that, that passes. I will move, we will move now to 7B. This is an ADU and JADU ordinance. And if I can turn it over to our community development director to kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor Juan. Members of the council. The item that's before you this evening is a proposed amendment to the Clayton Municipal Code in the Title 17 related to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. I'm going to abbreviate that going forward as ADUs and JDUs. On the phone, or on the Zoom call is Jenna Chillingarian, who I would ask be promoted to panelist. She is with the firm Precision Civil Engineering, who has been working with the city to develop pre-reviewed ADU plans, which we've discussed that program with the Planning Commission. I believe the council is aware of it as well. And they've also been providing support in drafting and updating the ordinance for the city's ADU regulations. I do have a deck, but for sake of time, I'm just going to leave it to what's in your packet. The deck, for those who are looking at the agenda online, is in the agenda packet as an attachment to the staff report. So I'm going to give a very brief overview of the item. Just beginning with some regulatory, regulatory context and how we got here. The amendment to the ADU ordinance was actually initiated for a couple of reasons. It was initiated by the city council in March of 2021, when you set your goals. One of them was to update the ADU ordinance to comply with state law. State law was changed around 2017 or 18 to change regulations that's applicable to ADUs and create new regulations for junior ADUs, JDUs. And the law was most recently changed as recently as September of last year. So the ordinance that you have this evening is a reflection of the council goal to update our ordinance to match state law and also reflects state law. The regulations of state law give jurisdictions some flexibility to set some local regulations. There are certain things that you can change with respect to your local ordinance. There are certain things that you cannot change with respect to your local ordinance. And the, the draft ordinance that you have in your packet reflects the flexibility that we have and also the regulations that we cannot change. What staff recommends is creating ordinance that creates three tiers for ADUs. Tier one, or type one ADUs, would be ADUs that are subject just to building permits. And those are limited in size to 800 square feet. They also have some other limitations. Again, you can see that in the deck. Tier two, or type two ADUs, would be those ADUs that are slightly larger, between 800 square feet, up to 1,200 square feet, or that just don't, don't otherwise fit all their criteria to qualify as a type two ADU. Type one ADUs are subject just to a building permit. Type two ADUs require a building permit as well as an administrative ADU permit reviewed by staff. The highest tier, what we've called a site plan review ADU, would be any ADU that is more than 1,200 square feet. Again, or otherwise doesn't fit in the type two category. Site plan review ADUs would be subject to review by the Planning Commission. In addition to amendments to Chapter 17.47, which is your ADU ordinance, staff does recommend other amendments to other sections of municipal code to create consistency. So, and those are listed in, again, in your deck as well as in the staff report. The required findings. Amendments to the municipal code and the zoning code in particular need to be consistent with your general plan. And this amendment, staff believes, would be consistent with your general plan, particularly your housing element policies that encourage diversification of the city's housing stock as well as supporting construction of ADUs as a, an affordable by design housing type. In addition, the ordinance needs to, ordinance amendment needs to address public necessity, convenience, and welfare. And staff also believes that the, that finding can be made because, again, as we've recommended the ordinance, the ordinance would simplify the process. I think it would provide a lot of clarity that is rather difficult to navigate in state law. But, and so it creates this tiered process, which I think will make things a lot easier for people to follow in terms of permitting and understanding what the regulations are with respect to ADUs. Okay, in conclusion, staff does recommend that the council introduce the ordinance, which is attached as Exhibit A to the draft ordinance. The, as is required by law, the Planning Commission did hold its own public hearing and adopted a resolution recommending that you adopt the draft ordinance. The Exhibit A that was attached to their resolution is the same Exhibit A that is attached to your draft ordinance. The commission made no changes to the text. And with that, I would recommend that the council open a public hearing, accept any testimony, and after deliberating, introduce in a way for the reading of the ordinance with respect to ADUs and JDUs. That's it.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff at this time? I have two questions. But you can go first.
Okay. Dana, just two questions on the type two ADU, which is the, I think it's 800 up to 1,200 square feet. Does the lot size need to be a minimum certain amount to accommodate an ADU of up to 1,200? I know that there are some setbacks and zoning restrictions, and 35% of the lot is open space. And also, are there additional parking requirements associated with ADUs? Or is that dependent on the neighborhood that they're in?
That's my two questions. Okay. So with respect to lot size, what staff is recommending is that some of the regulations with respect to floor area ratio, which is the area of lot coverage relative, excuse me, area of building, the square footage of a building relative to the area within the lot, we are recommending that some of those FAR regulations that are currently within the zoning code be brought forward and retained. So there's not really a minimum lot size. The one thing to be mindful of is that the city cannot enforce any, I mean, the city can enforce objective regulations, setbacks, floor area ratio, height. But it cannot enforce any regulation, objective regulation, that would result in an ADU being less than, I believe it's 800 square feet. So you need to be, we need to be mindful of that. And your other question was regarding parking. Generally speaking, for junior ADUs, state law does not allow imposition of a parking requirement. In other instances, the general rule of thumb is one space per ADU, but there are some exclusions to that. So there can be some allowance for up to one parking stall. And in some cases, the city cannot impose any parking requirement at all.
Thank you.
I had two questions. One was regarding setbacks. In the deck, it says, what the city cannot do is impose a side or rear yard setback greater than four feet for ADUs built in the same location and to the same dimension as an existing structure. If I, am I interpreting correctly that if there was not a existing structure in the same dimensions, then you could have a setback that is a setback requirement greater than four feet? That would be the contrary of that, so I'm not sure if that's true.
So for type one ADUs, which are the building permits, less than 800 square feet, we cannot require a setback greater than four feet. We can't require a setback greater than four feet. Someone could build it to a 10-foot setback, that's their choice. But we cannot require anything more than four feet. Your question about the type two ADUs was whether they could, I'm sorry, clarify your question, please.
If there's a, if it's a type two ADU, and there does not exist an existing structure within the four-foot perimeter, can we, is, is the city allowed to require a setback of greater than four feet? I wasn't, it wasn't clear because of the phrasing, so I just wanted to clarify.
So for the type two ADUs, if you look on page nine of the ordinance, which is the setbacks.
Okay, give me a moment to scroll. Sorry. I see page three of five.
It's, oh, thank you.
It's page nine of 13, which is the document page 128.
Mollusks advised me it's 128 of the PDF. Sorry, I should have brought the PDF with me.
Okay. Which, which, which item should I be looking at?
Subsection C, two and three, these are the setbacks that would apply to a type two ADU. So it needs to conform to a minimum four-foot side and rear yard setback.
So this is the ordinance as drafted. Is this all, does that align with what, the maximum that we are allowed to require?
Yes. By state law, yes.
Yes, that's, okay, cool. Because that's really close.
It, it can be, and it is. And, and I think your question also has, probably has to deal with Section 3, where you have a setback that may be three feet from an existing structure. That's, that's the setback.
I mean, existing structure makes sense, because if there's already a building there, then.
You're just converting the inside.
There's already a building there. But if there's no building there, this ordinance would allow a building to be constructed four foot from the property line?
Yes. And to what this ordinance also includes, which is within bounds of what local jurisdictions are allowed to do, is try to, is to impose other landscaping requirements.
I saw there's some trees that you could require.
Yes.
Okay.
Or fencing, or screening, or, or some sort of visual softening of the wall.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that that's actual requirement, and we really don't have discretion to go to do anything different than that. For the ones that require site plan review, I do understand that, you know, for, for some of the smaller ADUs, certain connection fees and whatnot are not allowed to be imposed. Does that benefit also accrue to ADUs that require site plan review, so greater than 1,200 square feet?
No.
No.
No. And, and just for the sake of the room, state law precludes imposition of connection fees or, or impact fees for any ADU that's less than 750 square feet. And then above that, up to 1,200 square feet, the fee is proportionate to the, is, it's equal to the proportion of the ADU relative to the size of the house. So if the ADU is half the size of the house, you have a 2,000-square-foot house and a 1,000-square-foot ADU, your fee is half. You would pay half of the fees. 50%.
Okay.
Okay. 1,000 divided by 2,000.
I got it.
I'm good at math.
Yes.
So I'm going to shut that off.
I'm, I struggle with it. Okay.
The, the state allowances and the, the state's regulations of what cities can or cannot do, in a sense, tops out at 1,200 square feet. A jurisdiction could allow more than 1,200 square feet, but someone who wants to build a 1,250-square-foot ADU is not going to get all the benefits that state law allows for ADUs.
Okay. Is there a limit as to the number of ADUs that could be placed on a single property?
For type ones, you can have an ADU, ADU, JDU, and an ADU. So you can have up to two. I'm trying to remember state law. I think you can impose a limit for type two and site plan review ADUs of one per lot.
Is that what our ordinance as drafted currently reflects?
I don't think it's that explicit, but we can.
I'm not saying that I would suggest that, I'm just curious if it's in there.
Isn't it a matter of how it would impact the FAR? I mean, if they have a 10,000-square-foot lot and a 2,000-square-foot home, and they put in two 1,200-square-foot ADUs, they're still going to be under the 49% FAR. It's just, I mean, it's just theoretically.
I mean, if that, if that is how the FAR is meant to.
That, that's the way I interpreted it. That's why I was, I was asking the question, that was the question I was going to ask. Couldn't somebody put two 1,200-square-foot if they're under the FAR?
As it's currently written, I think so. I don't believe that we set for type two and site plan review ADUs a limit on the number per lot.
I mean, if you have a 30,000-square-foot lot, then, again, awesome with math, you could put more than two.
Well, that's why I was asking about the lot size. Like lot size and, because 1,200 square feet is pretty big.
Pretty soon, you've got a multifamily complex.
Uh huh. That's where I was going with that.
I mean, a 20,000-square-foot lot with a 2,000-square-foot home, if you're going to get up to 50%, I mean, that gives you a lot of thousands. Okay. Is that a restriction that we can impose on the number of eighty, eighty, type two ADUs on a given property outside of the FAR limit? Is that available to us as a, as a rule?
I'm looking through the statute. If you want, if you don't mind giving me a moment.
Yeah, we, I, I will, I will give you time to look at that. I think that was really the extent of my questions. Okay, so with that, if you, if you want to continue looking, that would be great. I'd open this up, item up for a public comment, and then you can continue. If there's anyone that has public comment on this item, now's the time. Janet?
I do have one hand raised. Ms. Emerson, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm, I'm actually with Precision Civil Engineering, and we are consulted on the project. And just responding to the question. Anything over 1,200 square feet is not defined as a ADU under state law. So that, in terms of the number, anything over 1,200 square feet would not get, like Dana said, would not get the benefit. And you would, you could disallow more than one, over 1,200-square-foot ADU. If that answers the question.
Yes, it does. That, it answers that question. Thank you.
I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
All right. Did you have any other insight into what we were discussing maybe one minute ago? If not, that's okay. I, I don't want to put you on the spot, so that's, that's okay if you don't, that's all right.
I, I don't.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't think that we are seriously at risk for a chain ADUs.
Well, it's kind of in light of what's going on with SB 9, SB 10, and some of the, what the state is enforcing, and the comment that we can't impose an owner occupancy requirement. There are some big old lots in Clayton. And is it possible an investor could purchase one of those and decide to put a bunch of ADUs on it and make it also a multifamily complex? And I'm just throwing it out there as, as a possibility. And is that something that we, we want to talk about as, as limiting to a certain number? I just a thought process.
I, I think that's potentially, depending on the, the answer to that question. But I, maybe it would be good for us to move forward, and then we can get an answer. And if we, if the answer is something that we don't like, then we could amend the ordinance at that time. That'd probably be my suggestion. And if, you know, if someone submits an application for 20 ADUs on one property in the interim, then they get grandfathered in. That, that's probably how it would work. So, other than that, I think it, you know, the, the requirements that are here that we are changing, there is very little discretion, is my understanding, with regard to state law. So this, essentially, the main action that we would be doing is conforming the Clayton Municipal Code to what is required by state law. Even if we don't do it, and someone does make an application, I think they pretty much get the benefit of state law anyways. So it, it kind of behooves us to do that, so that we are in conformity. So, okay. Is, with that, let me get the action. Let me get the action just right here. Unless someone else wants to read it.
I move that we introduce and waive.
I move that we introduce and waive the further reading of the attached ordinance, amending the municipal code, and comply with state law, and making other reservations to the CMC Title 17 as necessary to ensure the internal consistency of the municipal code in light of our amendments to CMC Chapter 17.47.
I would second that.
Councilmember Chupiano?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Wanton?
Aye.
All right, and with that, thank you very much. We will move on to Item 8A. This is the, this action is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city to apply for an energy efficient loan from this California Energy Commission to implement energy efficiency measures. Mister Interim City Manager, would you take us away, please?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We're requesting the city council take action tonight to authorize us to apply for a low income loan from, it's California Energy Commission, it's called an Energy Conservation Assistance Act Loan, ECAA loan. It's at 1%. And so the, the financing terms and amount are very favorable for our energy efficiency project that we will be bringing to you at our next city council meeting, where there'll be a public hearing for you to consider that project by ClimatTech. And so our hopes is that when we apply for this loan, it would be successful and it would fund the majority of the, of the ClimatTech project. We're estimating it's probably gonna be between 1.8 and 1.9 million dollar loan request, and it would require some city additional money to be put into the, into the project in order to make it whole. But we'll have those final numbers for you at the April 4th meeting. So if council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I, I want to add that the reason we're asking for this ahead of the, the meeting on the 4th is because this is a competitive process. There's about $7 million available currently, I'm told, and the process takes four to six weeks to review and in 30 to 90 days to get on their docket for considerations. So we want to get a two-week jump on the process. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did you say we're looking for 1.8 and there's only 7 million left?
There's, correct, there's 7 million left in, in the, in the loan, in the pot. This is a revolving fund loan, so it gets repaid and replenished, but currently, from what our consultants at ClimatTech are telling us, there's 7 million available.
And we're asking for 1.8 of that?
Correct.
Thank you.
And we do have two representatives from ClimatTech here, and so if you feel the need to respond to questions, that'd be great. I, I was hoping that you could clarify the revolving nature of the credit facility as well as like, how many outstanding loans there currently are, and if it gets replenished with current debt service, is there, do we have information on that? Okay.
Yeah, so, go ahead, Tyler, Mr. Gertman can come up and answer that question.
Good evening, Mayor Juan, council member staff, thank you for the time and the question. We don't have those specifics regarding the revolving, how many loans are out there and the repayments, et cetera. What we heard today from the California Energy Commission is a $7 million that's available. There is a thought that they are, they are going to combine multiple sub-accounts next week and there could be additional dollars available, but that's where the urgency comes to resubmit. Just like Clayton would if you move forward and, and obtain this, obtain this loan, and once the project's installed and implemented, the city would repay it over the term of the agreement. Other cities are currently doing that right now on their projects that they've implemented over the last five to 10 years. And so that keeps adding up and keeps on revolving is what the essence is. And so if the monies are gone, then the, the application would be held, the next in line for the amount of money for that application, then it would let on that as well. So that's typically how the process has been done in the past.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Mr. Burnall, uh, City Manager Burnall, you mentioned that there would be money from the council that we would need to put in, but we won't know that until our next meeting. Do we have a ballpark figure on that?
The pro, the project currently, as I understand, it's in the $2 million range, so depending on how much financing we would get through the CEC, or if that funding doesn't come through, through a private source, it would be the difference between the total project cost and whatever our financing is.
So it could potentially be all on us?
The project could potentially be all on us?
If, if the private funding didn't come through, if all of that didn't come through?
Correct. If none of the other funding came through, then that would be the alternative.
Any other questions from council? Okay, I will open up public comment on this item. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment, now is your time. And if there's anyone online?
Mayor Juan, there's no hands, there are no hands raised on this item.
Okay, then I will close public comment, bring it back for discussion. I just want to say we, you know, thank you for bringing this forward and thank you for, for joining us, the representatives from ClimatTech. This item, there was an urgency just because of the nature of the funding source. I would stress that if we do move forward with adopting this resolution, and we have to adopt a resolution to do this because the credit facility will not accept it without a resolution, so that's why we're here. If, if we do adopt this resolution, it does not obligate the city in any way. We would apply for the funding, hopefully be successful, and then we get to decide if we want to actually accept it based on the terms that are offered and the amounts. So there's, I would say that this is a, a zero risk, zero obligation action, but it is necessary if we would want to move forward, so. And that is why we're doing it now, in advance of the presentation that will happen at our next meeting, which I'm very excited about. So with that, I would make the motion that we adopt this resolution as described.
I second.
All right, Janet, if you would call the rule.
Councilmember Chupiano?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. Thank you very much, and good night. All right, with that, that concludes Item 8A. And the next is Item 9, council items limited to requests for future meetings. If anyone has any requests?
I do. I have a few. One is, I've actually got two. One is I'd like, and, and interim city manager Ron Burnell, and I have talked about this already, coming up with a community calendar policy for our city website. Right now, the community calendar doesn't really have community events, it has council meetings and planning commission meetings. And it'd be great if we had a, one, maybe one calendar for that, and then another for community events like library, like our Clayton Cleans Up, like CBCA events, the theater, Clayton Valley Village, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd like to talk about a policy to put together a community calendar and what that would look like. And my other thing is, I had a wonderful presentation a few weeks ago by the Mount Diablo Interpretive Association. We are getting a brand new pavilion and visitor center at the Mitchell Canyon, Mount Diablo State Park entrance. And they would like to come to a future council meeting, preferably April 18th, if we can accommodate them, if not later. And give us the visual for what that's going to look like. Right now, it's a trailer, and it has been for many years, and there are more than 35,000 people that come through that entrance each year. So I put it out there for April 18th, but if not, they'd be happy to come anytime we can accommodate their presentation. That's it.
I think we can make that work.
Yeah, I did.
Thank you. I'd like to place for consideration and discussion the establishment of an ad hoc committee for the, for investing, looking into a public safety services district for funding. And help me, Mr. Burnell, if I've not phrased it properly, but something to look for, to the future, most likely next calendar year, for funding of the police department and securing the funding for it. That's all, thank you.
Any other council items?
I just reiterated what I asked for a couple weeks ago, I'd like to have a discussion on how things get put on the agenda and the procedure which to do so, so that we're very clear on when and how things can be put on the agenda, so the public and the council
Just two that I have. One, a resident approached me and asked about having a park put in Stranahan, and she would like to probably come and do a presentation or something here to the council with feedback from her community, so just keep that in mind. I'll come back to you guys with that when I hear more on a date. And then, and you were, you were looking strangely, so just the park that's in Stranahan, it's very tiny.
Yeah, I was like, it's already a park.
A play structure in the park, a play structure in the park, sorry, I misspoke. And then the other is, in light of some of the comments that were made earlier during public comment, I do want to have time for us to discuss the fees for other entities and a holistic view on how those are handled across the board. So someone had mentioned the sports teams, et cetera, and how their fees are associated with them, so if we can bring that back too, that'd be great.
Thank you, sorry, I was writing stuff down, so it takes me a second. All right, well, that concludes Item 9, and I do not. Moving on to Item 10, council reports. Councilmember Clovin, would you like to kick us off?
Absolutely. We had a meeting February 9th with TransPAC, and Councilmember Chupiano joined me for the meeting. No, March 9th, March 9th, beg your pardon, sorry, the Thursday after our last meeting, looking at the wrong, anyways, yeah, so that, I, I've had a lot of conversations since our last meeting with a lot of citizens about procedures and what happened, and there's a lot of, a lot of concern, and it's been voiced on several occasions here. Again, just making sure that everybody's being heard, and I was an ear to a lot of energy that's out there in our community, just want to acknowledge that. I have spent quite a bit of time on putting together Clayton Cleans Up, it's a little, it's a lot more challenging than, than I thought it'd be, talking to the county, getting permits for barbecue, but we are set, we've got posters being printed now by Republic Services, we're about ready to put a T-shirt order in, it's gonna be first come, first served for the first 200 participants, there'll be 50 children's T-shirts and 150 adults' T-shirts, all the scouts, girl scouts and boy scouts have been notified, as well as the middle school and the elementary schools and the, and the charter school. What I need is volunteers, so if you're listening and you would like to volunteer to help me coordinate this the morning of and show up at about 8 o'clock or 8:30 instead of 9 o'clock, I'd really appreciate it. Go ahead and send me a message, that'd be awesome. And it's happening, April 22nd, right here in Clayton, Clayton Cleans Up, there you go, end of report.
Thank you. Councilmember Tillman?
Yes, I'm actually doing it on the fly now, since, I forgot all about this part, since we've been in meetings all day long. Let's see, I missed a very lively meeting on the 7th because I was out of town. So since then, on the few weekends, few days after that, I attended the Network of Care Crab Feed, which was great, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that program, but it is an annual program for parents who are in the hospital with their sick children, and it provides meals to those families. And it was in light of, there's another lady here in the county, and I'm drawing a blank on her name, Janet Frazier, I believe is her name, whose children were in a car accident, and one of them died during the accident, the other daughter was in the hospital in critical condition, and she started this about 20 years ago because she realized that it had been days before she last ate, and a nurse shared her half a sandwich with her in the middle of the night, and she decided she was going to start partnering with people to put these meals together, and it's actually students with disabilities who actually service at the crab feed, they're located out in Antioch, I believe, and it's a great program that happens every, every year, so that's called Network of Care. We had our goal-setting session last week, and I'm looking forward to us coming back for the other half of that. Last Tuesday or Wednesday, sorry, I'm drawing a blank, I think it was Tuesday, I was a guest speaker for the Clayton Valley Women's Club, nice local ladies that actually put on scholarships for students, they get together every month, they actually are very lively and had some St. Patrick's Day themes and gifts that they were giving out, but it was nice to be able to just sit, very non-political, but a group of women who just wanted to hear what's going on in our community. They didn't hear our goal-setting session, but after sharing with them what we all actually work on as a, as a council, they were very pleased to hear that we're actually having conversations that are necessary to have and moving us all forward. And, can't think of anything else between now and then, if I think of anything else, I add it, but, oh, and then today, ours, maybe I'll, I'll leave that for you to, to update everybody on.
Thank you. Councilmember Chupiano?
As Councilmember Clovin said, I attended the TransPAC meeting with him on March 9th. On March, later that day, I was on the Energy Services and Infrastructure Renewal Ad hoc Committee, it's a mouthful, that's with, was with our folks from ClimatTech who were just here in the room. And we had a special city council meeting on March 11th to interview city manager candidates, then we had our goal-setting session on March 13th with the, our organizational assessment presentation, and then Tuesday, March 14th, I was at the Clayton Community Library Foundation meeting, and they will be planning a follow-up meeting with city, county, library and foundation. That's it.
Thank you. On the 8th, I attended a Clayton Historical Society meeting where we celebrated our first mayor's 102nd birthday. He's still going strong and still sound as a silver dollar. God bless him. Anyway, then later that evening, I attended the Morgan Territory Community Association meeting, the special marathon meeting on the 11th on a Saturday, a goal-setting on the 13th, ad hoc city, CBCA meeting on the 15th, and on the 16th, the County Connection Board meeting, more on that later, and then the special meeting today on selection of a city manager, thank you.
Please have your addendum.
Sorry, this one's kind of important, it was actually the Cal City's community services policy meeting last Friday, we met, and the two important topics that we talked about were a recap on the homelessness issue and the funding that's coming from the governor on that. There are some measures that they're trying to put in place to make sure that cities are more accountable for what happens with their homeless issue, homelessness problem, and clearly we don't have that here in, in Clayton, but they did talk about that there's going to be more funding that comes down, but it's going to be tied to how cities and counties work together. Part of the issue that was missing in the, the declaration or the resolution that they're trying to have is that it goes from state to cities and it completely bypasses the county, and the county only had to have jurisdiction over the unincorporated areas, and we were trying to push back from our committee to go back and say it should be the county as a whole, so that all cities that are within that county are working together in a partnership, so it isn't just coming, they're not just pushing from one, Concre couldn't push all of their homeless people into our city and vice versa if that were to happen, we're trying to make sure that we're looking at it holistically as a county. The other thing that came out was early education conversations and adding TK. If any of you guys are familiar with that, that's Transitional Kindergarten, that was started so that four-year-olds, if your birthday was before December 2nd, you can go into kindergarten early, or TK. Now they're trying to make sure that, starting in 2025, I believe it is, I don't have my notes, that that date gets moved back for everyone, so it really is truly four-year-olds can go into TK. The issue is that they believe that there'll be about 46,000 students that that will impact, or children that that will impact, and there aren't enough teachers. And the ratio for them has to be 1 to 12, so you can do the math on how many teachers they need, and there's already a teacher shortage. and there's already a teacher shortage. So if you know anyone that's in your family that's coming up that might possibly be graduating soon, and they're from high school, and they're not sure what path they want to go, they're really trying to encourage people to go into that field. Thank you for my addendum.
TK is awesome. Okay. There were several meetings that were held. I think that you have all touched on them, because we participated in them all together, obviously, the goal-setting. We had the meeting with ClimatTech. And then we had several different meetings regarding the recruitment of our full-time city manager. As much as we appreciate Mr. Brunel and would love him to continue, he has other obligations that he must attend to. So we are in process of selecting or searching for and selecting a new full-time city manager. We are all engaged in that deliberation. I think we started today at 1:00 PM and finished at 6:55 to come to this meeting. So we had that. And then I think we've done several multi, it seems like several multi. There are several days of many-hour sessions. Yeah, I lost my train of thought there. Our interim city manager, myself, and Vice Mayor Diaz met with representatives from CBCA, and we continued our discussions on how we were going to move forward. I think that was productive, and I look forward to additional conversation there. And then we met with ClimatTech, and the result of that was the thing that we just passed tonight. And then they will, they are on deck to present at our next meeting. Other than that, that is, and that concludes my report. So with that, I will move to item 11, and that is recessing this current city council meeting and roll directly into the Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District meeting. And whoever, and I believe you are the chair, if you want to, I would recommend if we could take a brief recess before we move forward, that would be helpful.
Let's take two minutes.
Brief. Two-minute recess, go.
You hear the GAD?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to call this next meeting to order. It is 9:21. And this is a meeting of the Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District. And Janet, will you call role?
Board member Juan?
Here.
Board member Tillman?
Here.
Board member Diaz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cloven?
I'm here.
Chair Trupiano?
Here.
And the first thing is, are there any public comments for this evening?
Chair Trupiano, I do not have any hands raised on this item and did not receive comment cards ahead of the meeting.
And there we have one.
Oh, we have one.
Well, this is on non-agenda.
Oh, sorry, on non-agenda, yeah, my apologies. Okay.
We look forward to hearing from you.
Hang on to that card. Sorry, it was on non-agenda. And item number three, consent calendar, was already approved on January 17th.
We did?
We did. It was not December 6th. It was January 17th, correct, Janet?
That is correct. It was approved at the January 17th meeting, the December 6, 2022 minutes.
Okay.
Okay. And then I guess I'm closing, item number three. There are no public hearings. Item number four. And then action item. We are going to have a presentation this evening by our city engineer and BSK out of Livermore. And so, city engineer Larry Thies, will you take it away for us?
Sure, Chair Trupiano and board members. Technically, I am the GAD manager in this role. It's a dual role, just like the members here. We have BSK, a sub-consultant firm to my firm, that did an assessment of the GAD areas, and they are going to do a presentation. We've come on board with the city within the last year, so this is kind of our first visual assessment and report. And we'd like to have this conversation tonight with the board members and get feedback tonight is one of our goals. And also some direction relative to the future budgeting of the GAD. Typically, the budget for the GAD comes up around mid-year, mid-calender year. So this is about the appropriate time. And tonight, getting some priorities, some ideas of how we want to address some of the revenue and expenditures relative to the district, and what particular maybe projects are or concerns that are brought up by the board members and the public. So just a brief overview. The Geological Hazard Abatement District is a separate entity, and it is a portion of Clayton, not all of Clayton. It's the Oakhurst development areas. But generally speaking, it's the, I guess, northern portion of Clayton. Includes the open spaces, the homes developed as part of the Presley Homes Development, Peacock Creek, Keller Ridge. So I'm going to introduce Richard Johnson with the BSK to go through a slide deck that's included in your packet. And just be mindful of some of the things. The, a lot of the pictures were taken prior to the storm season. It's fairly relevant. It's a good time we're having this discussion because in the October timeframe, when they looked at it, and then they did a follow-up site visit sort of post-storm. So you kind of get a before and after picture of kind of the heavy storms from this year. So, Richard.
If you could press the button on the right to turn on the mic.
That it? Well, Madam Chair and Councils, Committee, not sure what I got here. My name is Richard Johnson. I am a certified engineering geologist. I am with BSK, as Larry mentioned. And we brought with us, came with me. Christiano Mello is actually kind of our company's lead with Larry and whatnot, but he's a geotechnical engineer. So you've got the disciplines you need to be looking at geo-hazards and abatements and all those kind of things. I'm a little disappointed that these slides aren't much bigger because there is some detail that might be hard to see. Do you all have access to something at your desk at all? Okay, wonderful. Well... Yeah, I'm not sure it'll help on a couple of slides. But by and large, everything that you're going to, that we're going to talk about tonight, you've also seen in the report. With the, no, we've included the post-storm aspects that we ran across. In any event, what we're showing here is the GHD district, the hazard district boundaries. It's all in pink. We took a fair amount of time when we first went out, just getting ourselves acclimated to the area, and drove the entire thing, especially the, you know, with the streets and all the... Streets and sidewalks are really good indicators of slope movements or movements of any kind and whatnot. So we just kind of took our time one first morning out there to see where we really needed to focus our efforts. And what became very clear to us is the open space slopes adjacent to the subdivisions, really, we do need to keep an eye on those. But then also the known trouble areas, and those are what really took the bulk of our time and our attention. So we broke it into three areas. And if you look at the figure, I'm sorry, I'm looking over you, but that's my reference. We called one the north area, which is, in your report, you saw that as figure 2A, I believe it was, maybe 3A, 3A. And that's typically slopes that are to the north of the, north end of the district and above the houses on Windmill Hill. Thank you. I thought I had them all memorized. And really, that area, there's not a lot of evidence of anything deep-seated, and review of the literature says the same thing. There's really nothing up there that's deep and is going to threaten a bunch of homes. The biggest threat comes from the slopes above and to the side of it. So north... Well, let me, I'll go through them real quick. So again, we did a brief survey of the reconnaissance, I'll call it, of the, all the streets and sidewalks and whatnot to kind of focus our attention. And that led us into the three areas. If we can turn to the next slide, please. This is what we called the north area. And this is taken directly out of the report that we provided you folks. And what we did was just kind of flagged the areas where we saw, what in this instance are really kind of minor situations, especially before the storms. And so, I can't see the letters from here, but they, they're all keyed to a photo, and the photo shows what we were talking about. So really, at issue here, if you can flip to the next one. This is kind of the narrative on it. Really, what we saw was, you know, we looked at the maintenance of the V ditches and the drop inlets and all the drainage features that have been constructed. And we were actually pretty impressed. It's relative to a lot of places, areas that we've seen. These ditches all seem to be fairly clean. Drop inlets, we found a couple where there's maybe some plugged up areas. And there's also some areas where movement has maybe separated or offset the ditches. Now, the reason that ditches are very important, as is all drainage out here, and I think I heard Larry say this earlier, landslides move because of too much water frequently. That's one of the number-one causes of making earth move. And so it's very important to keep the water from flowing onto a hill slope. It's important to catch it if it's flowing down a hill slope, and it's very important to catch it if there's, at the base before it runs into neighbors' yards and whatnot. So we were actually pretty impressed with the maintenance. That's not to say there aren't some things that need to be done. When you look at the age of this neighborhood in general, and there is ongoing slope creep, which is defined in the Plan of Control, you may have all seen the definition of it. But it's basically, it's irreversible downhill movement of soil, but at a very, very, very slow pace. It's happening. And it's really, we noted that it was happening predominantly in the area that has to be mowed for fire control, which is unfortunate, you know, choose your enemy. But that has been required maintenance, ongoing maintenance. And again, I think you're ahead of it for now, but it's likely to, as the neighborhood gets older, and especially after you've had dry years like in a drought and you start to see moisture, it's likely to increase in its, the speed at which it happens. So the age, movement of the creep, the age of movement of the slope movements, and not really in this particular area, but it's going to be critical again to maintain things. Now, the one thing that did happen during the storm, sometime in January, we believe, there's a retention basin up above, I don't remember the address, do you?
Debris basin?
Yeah. It's uphill from...
3081.
3081, okay, thank you. It apparently, so the debris basin is there to catch debris flows, which are anything that can get entrained in earth moving downhill, tree limbs and rocks and sediment and you name it, you know. Horse bases or horse troughs, all kinds of things can be caught up in them. And this basin, per our understanding, was built to capture anything coming down the hill like that. Now, it looks like it was overwhelmed, and maybe the drainage part was even plugged up because water overflowed that and actually eroded the berm that is supposed to hold in all the debris. And muddy water... supposed to hold in all the debris. And muddy water wound up in one of your residents' backyards. That, we do think, is pretty critical, that be looked at and repaired if at all possible. Well, it's the bottom on the bullet, on the, I'm sorry, on the figures, and I'm blind, I'll put my glasses on for that. I believe it's C. In fact, if you want to flip the slide for me, these are, that's it, yeah. So these represents photos B, C, and E out of our report. B, I'm sorry, C, the middle one, is the debris basin I was talking about. So really, what you can see, if you're looking at it closer, is there is a drop inlet with a debris cage around it that is supposed to capture things before they get in, plug up the pipe. But the entire berm is missing, and you can see the mud that has kind of flowed downhill from that. It's tantamount to a dam break. Once water overtops something like this, it just washes it away. And it's not built to have that happen. Recognizing the magnitude of storms we had, this is really not a surprise. The first photo there is photo A, I believe, in your report, or B, in your reports. In that, in the report, you can see a black line outlining the area of instability above a catch basin right there. And that's, it's a very shallow slough, but it is partially plugging the V ditch, or the drop inlet, I should say. And so, that kind of thing is you're going to see it more and more as this neighborhood gets older and older. And again, after dry years, when you see a wet year like this, it's pretty common to have that occur.
For us laymen, can you clarify the slough?
Yeah. Do you, you probably don't have your report. Christian, did you bring your report?
Yes, I do. It's page four of the report. If you have a copy of the?
I'll walk it up so you can take a look.
No, I have it. We have it. It's page 182 of the PDF.
And there is an outline.
There's a black line around it? That's the part that is actually actively sloughing? I'm sorry, slough is a very shallow, very slow landslide, for all intents and purposes. It's not, it's not going to take homes with it, but it is going to plug up and make that drainage ineffective at any given time. I'm sorry. Make me define my terms.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
And is this also, pardon my question and interruption, is this also above where C is?
Yeah, that, I don't, I apologize. I don't have the residents.
It's B. I can see it now. Thank you.
Yeah. And to the right in that picture, it does slope down into the backyards of homes along Windmill Way, Windmill Canyon Way.
So C, yeah, it was C.
C. And then the final photo up there, we just put these collages in as kind of representative of what we were seeing there. The final one, the far right photo, is a photo E, E in the report. And what that represents, that's again, post-storm, but it's, if you look, the idea is to have the water flow into the V ditch. That bench is kind of back-rotated, the bench where the V ditch sits is kind of back-rotated. So the water's flowing along the base of the slope rather than in the V ditch, and it eroded it out. So that, again, is something that should be addressed at some point soon. Okay. So that's the north area we called it. Really, the things that we witnessed up there are really just kind of shallow erosional, again, drainage that needs to be addressed and whatnot, but nothing that's at least obviously threatening to the homes, backyards, and life. If you can move to the next slide. So this is what in the report, I believe, we call it the Keylock area. And I want to address that first by going along the south side of this, which is the south side of the subdivision as well, and then over to the, I guess would be the west. Again, similar kinds of things. The slope, you know, there's ravelling, which is a form of erosion. There's some sloughing. There's some wet slopes, which, you know, after these rains, how could you not have the wet slopes? But this was actually in December, when we only had had one really kind of serious rain. So moisture and slopes, and these are cut slopes, they tend to cause erosion. And that's what we're seeing there, very shallow erosion, very shallow surface erosion. Again, that's kind of for the key, if you don't mind going to the next slide. And I'm going to get back to the Keylock Way kind of danger areas in a moment here. But, so again, maintenance is really generally very good. The ages of slopes, you're going to have ongoing creep, and it's going to probably accelerate through the years. Dry years followed by wet years really do increase it tremendously. You have some pretty expansive clays in a lot of the slopes and a lot of the rock and a lot of the soil out here. During dry years, those clays crack, and you've probably all seen that in your backyards. The problem with that is when it starts raining again, they fill up with water, and the water gets to go down deeper into the slope, and it accelerates movement frequently. So, not much you can do about that, other than, again, maintain the drainage and do the best you can with it. Maintenance, again, is critical. If, well, the V ditch is over top, if the drop inlets are plugged up and water can't get in there, you wind up with a similar situation that you did in that debris basin, where the water will run down in a concentrated form, cause erosion, and it will end up in people's backyards. Something we found interesting, if you flip to the next one, talking about the encroachment into the Jihad areas, you can only barely see it in the photo to the far left. Along the fence, there's a little white strap that you can see. Well, that continues out and has been anchored into the drop, into the V ditch, and probably not the best practice to have. And the recommendation is that you, and we can identify the areas we saw, but ask the residents to correct what they've done in the.
What is that?
They secured, they, well, they secured their trees or hooked their trees to a cable that runs through the fence and is anchored into the concrete of the V ditch.
Yeah, they've encroached on the V ditch.
It's all on top of the ground. They drilled into the V ditch and put a, looks like an anchored bolt into it, and they tied their strap to it. And you'll see in another slide, I think we have the photo on it, it'll be in a moment, but somebody else actually built a short retaining wall and planted trees along that V ditch as well. Seth?
Code enforcement is a real thing.
Patrick?
So, again, same ideas. You can see there's the one V ditch, or the drop inlet's a little bit plugged up, so it's not going to drain altogether that well. The V ditch has a bit of an offset. That will still drain, but it's going to become ineffective at some point. And so those are the kind of maintenance items that are going to, they're going to be here forever. And the other maintenance piece would be keeping those ditches clean. So that's a general statement across the board, and, you know, it could be inventoried. We could talk about ongoing movement in some of the ditches that has found itself to be offset again. Others are new movement, things that haven't been addressed. But, again, over time, this is going to continue to happen. And it is crucial, I'm a geologist, it's crucial in my mind you keep the water off the slope. And, I'm sorry, would you, can you go back one slide, because I missed one item? Okay, so again, the shallow and somewhat widespread sloughing, which is, again, when the shallow, these are all cut slopes. And so what's there was very intact when they first cut it, but it will weather over time. And as it weathers, it starts to move downhill a little bit more. That's the sloughing. So it may be a foot deep. Might be a little bit more, might be a little bit less. But that's what we say when we're, or mean when we're talking about sloughing. So that's the general parts of this. I'm going to come back and talk about the cul-de-sac on Keylock Way, and then the Keylock Way landslide is what it's been being called. We'll get to that after we go through the kind of basics on the next south area. So if we can go forward. One more. This is the south area, and this is, got the Pebble Beach and Peacock Creek area landslide. Again, we did pay attention to that, and we'll go back to that one in more detail. But, again, walking around the perimeter of this, where we're looking at the slopes and whatnot, we did find, and it's been very well noted, there's kind of a swampy area down below Pebble Beach Drive. And I think that's going to show up in one of our photos. That, I've seen recommendations in past work that that be addressed and drained. We just simply don't know enough about it at this point in time. The good news is it's raining, and that's, you want the water coming out. So, again, and then as we walk around, more cracked V ditches, you get down towards the far, it'd be the southeast part, there's, you can see a little kind of hatched curve piece. That's a fairly large slough area that's actually probably more like two or three feet deep. And we'll get a photo of that. Yeah. There'll be a photo on the next two slides where you'll get to take a closer look at that. But on your report, that's also outlined in black so that you can see that. And then as you cross the south side above, that is Peacock Creek Drive, right? Okay, so again, wet slopes, kind of marshy, some broken V ditches, and minor sloughing as we go through there. Maintenance. We're back to the maintenance piece. So if you want to flip, next slide, please. Again, maintenance is generally good. More and more movement as it gets older and older. Residents have encroached on the GAD. This is the area above, I just said, Peacock Creek Drive, that somebody built a little retaining wall and planted four or five trees. And that might be in a photo I don't recall.
I think that's in the next slide. Yep.
Okay. So if you want to flip, the Brandon Wynn Wine Place and the uphill from Peacock is some of the slope movement I'll show you there. Next slide, please. Okay, so, yeah, you can see in the first slide, on the left, there's a couple trees uphill from the back fence. Right next to that is a little Keylock retaining wall, that, what, foot high?
About six inches to a foot.
Okay. So regraded, which is really bad planning on a slope like this. Next to that, you can see the person, that's Omar, our other geologist, standing. Right beyond him is the sloughing soil. And that's actually fairly large, and I'm going to say it's about two or three feet deep. At this point, it's going to be a maintenance problem. It's going to wind up on the trail. And it can enlarge. It could enlarge uphill and start to impact backyards above. We don't see signs of that yet, but it's kind of imminent. Yeah, I apologize. I brought a laser, but it doesn't work on the TV I tried. And then next to that, on the far right, is the marshy area downhill from Pebble Beach Drive. Uh huh, sorry.
On that one, that with the big outline, that is, trying to find the right location here, it's photo R. So that is...
Is there one in there?
Recall the name of the street, but it looks like there are houses like right above it.
There are. So that is Brandon Wynn Place.
Is that Brandon Wynn?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's right at the tail end by the cul-de-sac on Brandon Wynn.
So if this area enlarges, how much does it have to enlarge to put at risk the homes on that street that's right above it?
I, at this point in time, and without doing a whole lot more investigation on putting holes in and whatnot, I don't believe, I don't think it's deep now, and I believe it's a cut slope with rock. Bedrock there is marginal. You might not consider it to be rock if you went out and felt it.
Potentially low risk?
Low risk for now, but over the years, it may, it may need to be repaired before it starts to encroach on yards and whatnot. And you can't time it. I mean, look, we've had this year, we've not been there to look at that since the big rains have come. I don't know what it looks like today. That was in December, early December. So, it could have up and moved by now. So.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, we recognize, most of what we do, we do based on what we find underground and whatnot, and we've done none of that kind of work. So we're giving you our surface observations, and we can speculate a little bit based on other work that's been done out there, but.
Richard, you did two site visits in December, early and later, but then you did go back again in early March, but not to all the sites?
Not, the ones that we heard about, the broken or destroyed debris basin was the primary reason we went out there.
Okay.
And then this was Omar that went out. He went and took a look at some other areas that we had seen, but he did not make it to that particular area. So it was not thorough by any shape of the imagination.
Okay, thank you.
So again, kind of just general, what's happening out there is really the idea behind these. And we're going to get to the ones that I think warrant the most attention here coming up. So, next slide, please. So this is the Keylock Way area. And really, there's two areas of concern there. You're probably all aware of it. At the far west side, where the cul-de-sac lies, there is a home that's actually been red-tagged and destroyed, but the pavements are slumping, and there was an inclinometer down slope that was sheared off at a depth of 57 feet, if my memory is serving me. So we're going to talk about that one first. Next slide, please.
Can you, and just for the, again, for the layman, the inclinometer, I know it measures movement. Can you describe that in a little bit more?
Sure.
Details that we could, because when you say sheared off,
Okay, yeah.
I want to get a good picture of what that is.
So what it is, it's a piece of two-inch PVC, and it has grooves cut into that PVC that are opposing, 90 degrees opposing. And you drill that into the ground, you put it down deeper than you think you might have movement in the slope. You orientate one set of groups, grooves, so that they're facing uphill downhill. The other ones are cross-graded. You fix that all in place, and then over the years, you run about a two-foot long, it is a two-foot long instrument down there, that, and you take a recording every two feet with it. And what that does is tell you how much that thing leans one way or the other. So if you have movement happening over time, you'll get leaning, and the next time you get more leaning and more leaning and more leaning. At some point, and it happened in two of the inclinometers out there in the Jihad, the ground has moved enough that it, the conduit may not be actually sheared, but it is such a steep bend in it that you can't get that instrument down past it anymore.
So is it literally like a tube that you drop a device into to measure?
Right.
So there's like a hole somewhere?
Say again?
There's a hole somewhere?
It was a well. It's basically, it's a well that was drilled, a small diameter well, and this was dropped into it. And then you grout it, you fix it in place with a grout. Sometimes people use sand and whatnot. These were grouted. And again, then you monitor. And over time, if that slope is moving, it will shear that off at that point.
Okay, thank you.
And you're not looking for it to shear necessarily. You're looking to track the motion and get the timing or how fast it might be moving and whatnot. This would move fast enough that it became unusable. So once you can't get down past that point, you can't tell if there's any more leaning or movement going on, because the part you're measuring is already gone downhill. Yeah. So, I'm sorry? Pardon me. How deep was the inclinometer? Was it 50 feet, you said? Well, it's shearing. As I said, it's sheared at 50. 52. I'm seeing my number for now, so. And how deep was it installed? I don't recall the total depth, but it's down around 100, as I recall. Okay. And in general, by today's dollars, what is the cost for a replacement inclinometer? Well, we're going to talk about that if you, I can address it now, sure. Because we're going to recommend the replacement of two inclinometers. In essence, we're really kind of blind as to what's happening here and also downhill from Pebble Beach, because we don't, we can't measure the movement anymore. And we're estimating...
Thirty to 40,000 to install one inclinometer. Probably close at 30,000, but just ballpark.
And Larry is going to go over all the detail about budget versus expenses after the presentation. Right, Larry?
That is correct.
Yeah, we can. So this is, this recommendation is not brand new. In fact, I've seen it as far back as, I think, 2014, when they were not able to really monitor these anymore. And this is in the ballpark that the cost has been all along. So.
What does that mean? I'm sorry. They weren't, because it was already sheared off since 2014?
Yeah, this has been sheared off for many years. And that's why I say we're kind of blind right now as to what's really happening out there.
Thanks.
We know there's movement at the surface. We just don't know how fast it's moving. One of the problems with landslides like this is the more they move, the faster they move. And again, the thing you really don't want with landslides is water, water will dam up behind it, for lack of a better term, not lack, but that could be happening here very, actually very likely. And we don't have any eyes on that. We don't know how much water pressure is behind this thing. The landslide will start to act as a dam to some degree, and hold, and water will build up behind it until it pushes it out. So again, you don't want water under landslides, and you don't want water on top of landslides. We don't have any visibility at all of what's happening with water or slope movement here. But the surface, the rupture in the court and to that home, we know that there's something happening. So, yeah, the other piece of this is as something like this moves, if it's up in the street moving, it could be impacting the utilities. And when you impact a utility that carries water, like a sewer line, or even worse, a pressure line, it's going to make it even worse. And so. But these are inclinometers, not monitoring wells to measure moisture, correct? Well, they, so they typically... Well, they, so they typically, they typically double as what's called a pizometer. So they're not groundwater wells, but they are to measure groundwater surface. And there's several pizometers out here as well. They just haven't been monitored in, in recent years. So, and, and I'd say it's critical at this point with all these rains to really understand what's happening there now.
Can you, can you expand on a pizometer?
Pizometer is, it's, it's basically, it's the same thing. It's a, it's a tube you put down there. Pizometer is double as a, I'm sorry. Inclinometer is double as a pizometer frequently. You just leave it open at the bottom, and the water comes into it. Water will rise to a certain height depending on how much pressure there is behind it. And that's how we know what kind of pressure is working on the backside or underside of that landslide. So, I'm, sorry again, yeah, make me, make me define my terms.
No, I mean, you know, I can read the material, so I understand. I just want it for the purpose of the discussion.
Sure.
Good.
Well, I'm not sure we, we really went into that detail on this. We keep more on the inclinometers, but pizometers are important too. This slide, to my knowledge, I found nothing about it, if it exists, that there's been no work done on it to de-water it, which means putting in, you can put in horizontal wells that are drilled sideways basically to intercept water-bearing areas. Or like they did the other in a key lock, you can drill straight down and put wells in there to get to water and then drain those out. Nothing has been done at this end of this cul-de-sac that I'm aware of. And, and in fact, not many people have even called a landslide. If you move to the next slide, this is a very idealistic, okay, so this, the red line is a cross-section that we drew from where the cracks started in the pavement through the inclinometer and just down the slope for some distance. We put that there to show you an idealized cross-section of what could be happening with the landslide there. So, next slide please.
So what is the red line supposed to represent?
That's, that's the, that's the line across the surface that shows you where this current figure was drawn. So this is a cross-section into the earth that crossed, that, that follows that red line.
And, and that Key Lock Way cul-de-sac, that's where the red-tagged house is?
Yes, that is.
Correct?
Yeah. In fact, yeah, you can see it there to the, to the right side of the red line on the edge of the slope. Okay. So if that makes sense, we'll go to the next slide, which doesn't look nearly as busy out on TV. But what you'll see there is the flat area up the top is, is Key Lock, the cul-de-sac on Key Lock Way. And we note where the cracks are in that. Next, as you go towards the down slope side, there's a vertical line that, that drops down, and that is the inclinometer. We've marked on there the depth at which that inclinometer sheared off. So landslides like to typically form in a circular fashion. And so we drew, drew, drew through this based on the cracks and where the inclinometer is, what, again, an idealized potential failure surface.
This seems bad.
Seems like?
This seems bad.
We don't know. And that's the problem. We just don't know. So again, a slide like this, there could be a toe forming on this. A toe is, is the bottom side of a landslide. It's the bulge at the bottom of a slope. You'll never see it on a slope like this. You can see eight inches of settlement in that concrete and the pavement up top, but eight inches of bulge in that slope, you're just not going to see it. So we don't know if it's toeing out down there. We, we just don't know. This one concerns me. The, the good news is it's, it would probably enlarge uphill over time, but I don't think this threatens any more homes at this point. Not that I could see anyway. Unless they're down slope. If this turned into a flow, you could have all kinds of problems down slope. So landslides will do that typically. They'll start in mass as they get wetter and wetter, and especially at the toe area, they might turn into a flow. And, and this is not a super steep slope, but it could still reach yards down below. I, I think you would see a lot more damage up top if that happened. So it's not, not imminent. So that's the Key Lock cul-de-sac. We're calling it Slide.
Richard, let me interject real quick. I think it's important, it's probably a good relative to this particular location, is that GADS are formed to address district-wide issues. And even in the plan of control, that any geologic hazard needs to be, that would be addressed by the GAD, has to extend beyond the limit of one single residential lot. So it could potentially go into an open space or threaten more homes. But that's usually the, if, for example, there's a geologic hazard or a landslide that if, just affected one home, it wouldn't trigger the GAD to step in to, to repair that home. That homeowner would be on their own. That's very typical across all GADS because of the way they're set up. But it's really meant for larger issues that affect multiple property owners. And that's when folks step in. The GAD steps in.
Can I just ask a question to, let me just ask the question. So if, based on this Key Lock Way area, there's only the one house that's been red-tagged, which we all know about. But if there were to be potential issues with the houses down below, which are down the hill by the park, I think you have to get to Golden Eagle, something or other, or the ones down the hill. If those are not in danger of moving, but if this were to come down onto them, is this not something that we would step in and take care of? Not necessarily the house, but shoring up that hill?
I think certainly it's a GAD decision as a board. Ultimately, I think if it, if it affects beyond more than one lot or one parcel or one property, and I think, then that's a decision the GAD has to decide to step in or not. I would say currently, just to be clear, that this particular home has not been deemed a issue relative to the GAD, is being deemed specifically to this parcel. So I do want to be careful about this discussion, is that this property owner is basically on their own right now. And that's how the, and I, I don't know exactly how long this goes back, but it's gone back a long time, but that's been the, the position so far for the city, or for the GAD.
So if we, if we don't talk about that one particular property, but pretend there were two other properties within the GAD that were impacted by geological activity, and they were damaged in some way, is the GAD obligated to step in, or is it discretionary?
Well, I, I would say the purpose of a GAD is to address larger issues. So I mean, that is the purpose. Fundamentally, the GAD has to have the funds to, to do it, but it would have the right to go in to that, those properties or into the open space, which the GAD owns anyway. But it has the ability to, and the property owners probably want you to come in anyway, but you have the ability to sort of assert your, your rights to go in to, to correct it. Because there could be a situation where some owner is affecting someone else, right? And so the, the situation might be is, look, I do need to come into your backyard, even though you don't think it's a big problem, but it's potentially going to affect multiple other property owners.
Okay. So that sounds like it's discretionary?
I would, honestly, I defer in terms of the attorney. I, I don't, I wouldn't say exactly what, what the trigger is, but in terms of the plan of control that the GAD was formed on was on this basis. And it's not, that's typical of most GADS. It has to be beyond one lot.
Okay. Yeah, I guess maybe we can take it offline, but my question is mostly around if there is an event, is, do, are we obligated to take action in some fashion? And, I mean, I, the funding response is, is pragmatic, but I'm really just considering whether it's something that presents that type of risk, that we would be obligated to do something. So that is an open question. Please, continue.
In light of this part of the conversation, I want to make it clear that I don't think that this is anything that is incipient. It's not going to happen and turn into a flow and impact the downhill homes. There's no reason to believe that's going to happen anytime soon. It could just be an end result as movement continues. So, okay. Go to the next, please. Well, here you have it. The Key Lock. I think we missed one. Can we go backwards? Oh, I see. It's kind of out of order. I, I apologize. This next slide, if we can jump past that one.
I think you can go back two more slides, and then there will be...
No.
Is that why you wanted to...
Well, okay. Yeah, go back another one. I'm sorry. You're right. It's all on one kind of key map. Go back to the, one more. One more.
And one more.
And one more. Sorry. Wow. We kind of got this out of order, but one more time, please. So on the, the top, kind of towards the right side of this, you see the big oval circle around what we're calling the Key Lock Way landslide. And this, this is probably the area that's received the most attention of the, of the entire GAD through time. And we'll show you why. So go ahead and flip back now to our, our narrative on it. So forward a couple. And there. So this is, this has been called the Key Lock landslide. We called the other one differentiated by calling it the cul-de-sac at Key Lock Way. This one has been studied and dissected, and it's, it's like Swiss cheese. It's got so many holes in it right now, but it's, it's, the synopsis is that it's due to the incomplete removal of landslide during the initial grading of the subdivision. And that actually happened downhill of Pebbles, downhill from Pebbles as well. But in this case, pretty good documentation on what's going on in terms of where landslide was remaining. And I, I, I don't know the history of the litigation behind all of this, but I know a lot of money was paid out. So I think that the original planners and, and engineers went up to their mistake, and, and this thing was built over top of it anyway. Again, water is the enemy of a landslide. So what they did here is they went in and they, they, after kind of finding movement, and it was down around 48 feet at that point in time, they put in a gallery of six different, I believe they're two-foot diameter wells, down to 100 foot, 100 feet, and then some, 112 in some cases. They went down to the bottom of the hill and drilled holes back horizontally, but inclined up towards those, and they intercepted those wells so that you could get gravity drain out of them. The idea was to de-water the landslide, to take the water out of the hill slope. So in some instances, they dropped water as much as 80 feet, if memory serves. In other cases, it maybe dropped 12 to 20 feet. But still, that's taking a lot of pressure off the landslide. Since they installed that, they've actually abandoned or not, were no longer monitoring the two inclinometers that were showing movement at 48 feet. But movement has slowed way down as a result of putting in this, this de-watering work.
And when you say the monitoring has ceased, whose responsibility to do the monitoring? The folks that installed the, the wells?
Yeah, I, so what's unclear to me, the, there was still monitoring happening out here. I'm sorry, I misled you. The two wells that were showing movement at 48 feet were no longer monitored, and I can find no record of them, if they even exist out there anymore. So I say wells, they're inclinometers. So I don't know what happened, who stopped, or what changed with that. But they started, they installed a bunch of new inclinometers. In fact, many parties have installed inclinometers out here, and they've all been monitored through time. Since the, the de-watering wells were put in, they're, they're seeing maybe two hundredths of a foot, which is about a quarter inch, movement down in the 100, 112-foot range. So that's not...
How many inclinometers and pizometers do we have now?
Let's, let's...
Do we know?
Let's...
Future slide.
Yeah, if you don't mind. So, yeah, so it slowed. Inclinometers, inclinometers are, monitoring's still imperative. They've done a good job of monitoring this area over time, but in sort of a disjointed fashion. A lot of people have been out here. I think some must have been out there as a result of homeowners asking for things to be looked at and whatnot, because there's nothing in the record that we've gotten where they may have done that for the GAD. So, kind of ahead of ourselves here, but we're, we're recommending again, the monitoring, that the monitoring continue. You don't need a new inclinometer here. In fact, you have, you'll see in a minute, there's seven inclinometers that have been monitored over time recently, and that's our recommendation is to keep looking at those and correlate those with groundwater levels. And also, again, confirm that those vertical wells, the de-watering wells are, are doing what they're supposed to do. They all drain into a, a sump down at the base of the hill down by the park, and, and that has been looked at over time. We didn't have the equipment to open it. It's a big, heavy metal sheet. We didn't know what we were looking at. So we, we were not able to open it and take a look, but... Can we go to the next slide, please? So these are, you can see, there's just red ink everywhere on this, and these are all inclinometers of one form or another. We put a white flag next to the ones that have been monitored over the past, well, I saw the, the most recent one in 2016. I believe that there's something done since that I've not seen. But those are the inclinometers that were monitored, and it's probably appropriate that we continue to monitor those, just because we have history on them. None of those have sheared off. In fact, the, the most movement, I believe, as I recall, is, was just two hundredths of a foot. Again, a hundredth of a foot is almost the same thing as an eighth of an inch. So, quarter inch.
Is this like 20 inclinometers?
There's, there's at least that many out there, I would say. We, we are proposing that the seven that are marked there be monitored. That's what's been monitored over the past half dozen, dozen years.
I'm sorry. I know that Councilmember Trupiana was just asking, who is monitoring them?
Well...
Or where's, where's the report going?
So, so you actually have them listed up through 2016 on the website, the GAD website for Clayton, City of Clayton. In the past, it was a company called Burlargalong, and then it became a, I'm not going to remember the name, Bailey.
Stephen Frona...
Stephen Frona Bailey. California engineers and geologists did it. If you look at the, the names of these different wells, most of those point to who put them in and who was monitoring them. And so it's been a host of people that have been doing it, but, but most recently, Stephen Frona Bailey monitored these seven. And that was your, your last geologic, geotechnical consultant?
And you said that was 2016?
Last I saw was 2016, but I've seen reference to something done in 2020. I just, I could not find that report.
What's the frequency that is typically done on monitoring of devices of this kind?
You know, your, your plan of control says quarterly, which is not a bad idea.
It's not quarter-century? Quarterly?
Every, every three months.
Okay.
We believe that you could probably get by with this if you went in the spring and in the fall every year, twice a year. Unless you start to see movement, then you should probably increase the frequency of the ones where you're seeing movement.
What's the level of effort for doing a read on the monitoring, like?
We, we figure you could probably do, these, these depths, you could probably do between two and four a day. What do we decide to?
Yeah. It's about, yeah, three to four a day.
Three to four days.
So a couple hours each?
Yeah. Yeah. Easily. It's, it's, you, you gotta lower the device down two different directions. All the way to 100 feet, you come up two feet, let it kind of equilibrate. You have to let it sit for a second. And then again, and again, and again, and record the day as you come up. It's not a quick process. And even, even locating to a hole that's on mid-slope carrying up 200 feet of cable is, it just takes time.
Okay.
So again, our recommendation here is that the monitoring continue. It looks like movement has been slowed. I'm not gonna say it's been arrested, but, the reason to really pay close attention to this one is the estimate is that as many as 15 homes could be destroyed if this thing really did take off and start moving. So. That got my attention.
Now, this is an area that obviously has had a lot of attention.
Yes.
Are there potential, I mean, do you, did you see any evidence that the similar risk would exist in neighboring homes, like just across the way?
Across the way to the-
Well, I mean, like if you move like four houses to the left.
This is, again, my understanding, we, we were, a lot of the damages that had occurred to flatworks and homes and streets and whatnot has been repaired. So it was not evident to us when we were out there. A lot of street repairs have been done recently that, that covered up a lot of what may have been happening. We have not done surveys with residents, all the things that you would have to do to see if there's ongoing problems. I do think that's something that all the residents out here should be encouraged to do. They probably already do it, knowing where they sit, but. Yeah, we, that's just far beyond the scope of what we were, what we were doing out here.
Okay, thank you.
We didn't see anything at the street level, sidewalk level, driveways. And even downhill in the V ditches, there's really, you know, there was a couple of little offsets here and there, but not bad. And they have had that problem in the past. So. Can we go to the next slide? So this is, we're back to what I call the Pebble Beach and Peacock Creek landslide or land movement area. And that's kind of what it's been called through time, but that's the, the oval at the top towards the right side. This is another one where they've got a lot of evidence in the street, some in the houses, a lot of them down in the V ditches and whatnot. And it has a sheared inclinometer on this side as well. Can we go to the next slide, please? So this is, we found this in, in some of the literature. This is, this dates back 2016, as I recall, and, and beyond. So to the right, I'm sorry, to the left of this is, it's the plan view. So what it shows is the neighborhood, the lots, the street, and the line that crosses through it is again, the cross-section line for the portion of the figure off to the right. This, this is interesting. We didn't, we didn't, we've not been able to get access to the original geotechnical reports or grading plans, but this reflects a lot of what happened out there. I think what's most important here to understand is that, I, I, boy, sorry, I have to put my glasses on, look at my figure. So on the cross-section piece itself, if you go to the, the left-hand side of that, I don't know if you can read it, but it shows the street and it actually shows where the lots are. So it has a, well, the cross-section line goes up in an endless way, but you see a lot, a street, a lot, and then it starts down the slope. As you go down from that a little bit, there's another vertical line that is B, two? B1, B2, oh, B1, I'm sorry. So that shows you, that's one of the inclinometers and it's one that, that sheared off and it shows you the depth at which it sheared. The scary part about that one to me is it's shearing off much deeper than this shows the original landslide and, and grading repair or grading to have been done to the tune of-
Much steeper, you said, or deeper?
Much deeper. So where they knew they had movement before, was, uh, I'm sorry, my writing is too small, but it's, it's at a depth of about, again, 52, 57 feet, which is about twice as deep as all the previous grading and drains and all the work they did to try and make that slope stable in the first place. So again, it's much deeper than what was anticipated, I think, when they first started this whole process. The thing of this area to me, there's a lot of subdrains that were put in, which are reflected on that plan. They're little round dots that follow along the lines. Those are drains that they put in as they were put and filled back against the slope. There are pipes with gravel around them, some kind of filter, maybe cloth around that. And they're supposed to pick up the water that is damming up behind the fills that they put in. And past reports have talked about that it sounds like it's doing its job. We couldn't find any of the outfalls to these subdrains. The, the outfalls, which is where the pipe daylight is for the water to flow into a ditch and whatnot. Now, that's not to say they're not there and they're not working. They just were not, there's no good documentation of where they are. And so we're gonna have to, somebody's gonna have to get out there and do a much better job of, of looking. We kind of ran out of day. Can you read, can you read the cross-section? My eyes are awful.
Okay, just the overall thickness?
Yeah.
Looks like about 25 feet of fill?
Yeah, about, yeah, 25, 30 feet is, is a good estimate.
Yeah.
And the inclinometer sheared off at how deep?
Uh, 50, again, 52, 54.
So it's sheared off theoretically in bedrock is what you're saying?
Well-
That's why, according to this, according to this story, that's why I'm kind of confused.
No, that's, that is, that's a true statement. Bedrock in this area is not like in the Sierra Nevada. It's not granite. It's, it's frequently a mudstone or a clay stone, sandstone if you're lucky. But they're, they're having bedrock based or, or landslides that encroach into bedrock is not at all uncommon in this area. Not at all.
Would the, uh,
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Would the, uh, subdrain material that was being put underneath the fill, would that be PVC in, in rock or?
Hard to say what they may have used. I have seen it always, it's typically not PVC. It's, it's most frequently an ABS, which is a sewer line. We saw a lot of corrugated pipe coming out and into V drains and that used to be used a lot by folks. So it's a very, it's kind of like the, the four-inch diameter stuff you put on your, your downspout.
Would that be something like a G-
Bigger diameter, but-
A GPR or EM survey would be able to find?
Yeah, they could, they could probably snake it and, and use something like that to find it, yes. If we can find the cleanouts. So that's the thing. It's, it's just all, there, there may be surveys that show it. We just don't have access to them. And so go back to, I don't know if anybody's bought the original general, general symbols and whatnot, but, but if they're available, they, that, that could be useful. We just don't have it. So. Now, one thing they did try here in 2007, if I'm not mistaken, previous geologic consultant went out and they tried to drill subdrains into the, into the slide to drain it because they knew that there's water building up behind it. Every one of those subdrains came up dry. So they weren't getting down where it needed to be something. They stopped because it was not doing anything. So they saved the Jihad some money. This has, to my knowledge outside of those subdrains, it has no viable drainage behind it, especially down as deep as it's failing. So I think that that is a good move to consider. And again, we don't have visibility on, on how this might be moving at this point in time. The inclinometer is broken. This one, I don't know how many, I've not read how many homes they theorize may be on it, but I can, I can see at least four, if not five, that are probably, would be caught up in it. And they have had a lot of flatwork problems and separation between curb and sidewalks and, and whatnot as, as time goes on.
Can I see a quick?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you see that sidewalk curb issue?
Everything had been, it was a pretty good repair when we were out there.
Okay.
But as you read through the history, yes.
Yeah, and the neighbors have taken care of it on their own.
Can you expand on this, um, this idea that the movement in this area is, appears to be deeper than the landslide repair? What are the implications of that? So if I'm, if I'm understanding what you're saying here correctly, historically, there was a slide. It was known. They did repair work, built stuff on top of it.
Yeah.
And then now it appears that underneath the repair work, there's additional movement that's happening?
Yeah, and so I, I, I might have misspoken when I say repair work. What I mean is, it, it is known that this area and also the one in Keylock, that they did put fills in over top of active or formerly active, not completely removed landslides. And this is what appears to be going on here.
So if that is what is happening, if that is in fact what is happening, what are the implications of that to the, to the repair work? Would it just have everything come down over time?
It could. Yeah, I, I can't say it couldn't happen, but that's all the reason to, to drain it. I mean, that really is gonna be a driving factor behind this is, is how much water is caught up behind it. Now, the other wild card is if there's seismic activity with or without drainage, you can still trigger these things. With water, you can trigger them.
Okay.
You know, in space.
But who is the who, that's the them, that built on top of this?
I mean, whoever built the houses, right?
The original developers.
Presley Homes?
The original developers. And, and I know there was a lot of lawsuit work on that. I couldn't tell you what happened where.
And there was some money recouped from that, but I know that's, we'll get into the money part. Okay.
So I believe this is our last one. And let's talk about it some more. Okay. More what I just said. Really, it's despite past attempts to drain, there's, there's no obvious drainage to us, especially down as deep as they're seeing movement.
So it was like, just finding out what the issue is matter, putting another inclinometer to depth and figuring out where the moisture is?
Well, that, okay, so a single inclinometer would tell us that it's still moving or not.
I mean, okay, but a pismeter, they're trying to find the moisture.
And, and you want to use those in tandem because especially if something's moving, you want to make, has water level gone up? Has the water pressures increased or what? So you're, they're all data points. One is not more important than the other. I say that, I would prefer to have an inclinometer to a pismeter, but you put in one, you get both.
Right.
If you put an inclinometer. If you put in a pismeter, you don't necessarily get both. And, you know, to, to understand fully what's going on, I mean, we're talking much more than just putting in an inclinometer. If you want to fix for this, we'd be asking to put in a lot more work in terms of borings and, and things like that to understand it better.
What is the relative, like, yeah, one does not seem sufficient. So how far apart do you typically space in, in this environment?
Well, you saw the other photo where all those were. You, you want to try and-
Looked like a target range?
Well, that, that one did. We wouldn't propose that many. But you want to try and figure out where the edges are, where the toe is, you know, how far is it moving upslope, downslope? There is an uphill inclinometer here and also, well, there was a Keylock, that is not showing much movement, but it's also right where the cracks are forming in the street. So I would say it's at the crown. If this thing were to move over time, that would probably move as well. But for right now, that one is, seems fairly stable. So above the movement, which is-
Top of the movement.
A good data point.
So it's not moving.
Okay.
So we, yeah, I, you know, I would say you'd want at least probably four or five on this to try and define the boundaries and depths.
And that's just that one section?
That, what we think this slide would be. So you, we can visit old topographic maps and things that happened before this was put in. So we know that this is in its own kind of distinct drainage basin. There would make no sense to put in pismeters in the next drainage basin of the dome because that would be, if there's a slide there, it's a different slide. So we would be going based on original topography and, and things like that to help us.
Okay.
See where we are.
Okay. Any other questions at this time for Richard? Go ahead.
Just one, and I know that Peter, you're speaking his language right now, so he keeps, keeps interpreting for me. But what does keep water off the slope mean? You mentioned that earlier and I'm just, it rains and it falls on the slope, so.
Right. And, and that water, you can't really prevent from getting on the slope, but you want to intercept it before it runs from top to bottom and creates goalies. You start to create goalies, they get bigger and faster. You don't want any water washing over the top and onto that slope. That's why you want V ditches across the top, V ditches mid-slope, and even V ditches the toe of the slope. So you're really just trying to intercept it before it really gets kind of long runs and, and turns what's called a rivulet into a river.
Okay. And then in the Jihad area, do we have all of the V, V ditches where they should be? Are we missing any aside from the ones that are offset or there was debris in them?
I, I can't honestly say we looked at it from that perspective, but I, I personally didn't see any place that should have had a V ditch that didn't.
I would agree. You know, primary concern certainly is maintenance, which-
Can you please come to the mic? Thank you.
So primary concern, right, is upkeep of maintenance for the, the V ditch, ditches, which appears to be ongoing. We saw evidence that a lot of the panels, so they, they come in probably 10, 20-foot segment between joints, right? Because concrete will crack. So the designers know that and they have these joints. But we saw lots of evidence that over the years, several panels have been replaced. Others have been patched, you know, where there's a lot of separation between one panel and another. We saw, you know, just joint compound applied there. The, you know, Rich mentioned there's some offsetting going on. Right now, things seem to be flowing in the right direction, but over time, there, there should be long-term maintenance, you know? Every five years, you know, plan on replacing, I don't know, 100, 200 feet worth of panels, you know? So that wouldn't be all in one location. You might be talking, you know, a 20-foot segment here and then in another subdivision, you replace another panel. So as far as we could tell, as long as the V ditches are, are well maintained, they seem to be appropriately located. The, the question is the three main areas of concern, you know, whether former landslides or suspected landslides. You know, that's the cul-de-sac at Keylock Way. The landslide that was all the inclinometers that historically has shown evidence of movement, but then it was reduced because the wells that were installed appear to have been effective. We just don't know historically what has happened since then because monitoring stopped, what, 2016?
No, that location, they're still monitoring.
They are?
But they only have about two hundredths of a foot.
Okay, so 200 foot. And then there is this location at Pebble Beach and, you know, the creek is?
Uh, Peacock Creek.
Peacock Creek, where there is also evidence of movement, but then we don't have the, the history behind it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Larry, would you like to walk us through the financials?
Yes. So I appreciate, thank you, Richard. So as you heard, you got more of the, sort of the, the nuts and bolts in the field. I wanted to kind of wrap up our presentation relative to the overall financial aspect of the district. I think as you're aware, there's roughly 1,484 units within the, the GAD district. And right now, based off of the assessments at their maximum that are adjusted for CPI, our current fiscal year anticipated revenue is around $47,000, which is, in my opinion, is very low. There is a breakdown of, there's three different areas within the district and they're assessed at different rates. You can see that in the staff report. I think it's on the fourth page of the report. Essentially, the, there's the lower level areas, in the flat areas closer to the creek, or the downhill areas, which do have more multifamily. Those are assessed right now in the current fiscal year a little, close to $26 a unit, but then the multifamilies have a percentage. So a duet is at 75% of that rate and, and 50% for the multifamily. And then there's two different single-family home areas. One of them is $34, $35. And then another area is around $83, to give you a perspective. Now, adding all of these up comes into about $47,000. The current budget for this fiscal year did have some carryover starting balance from last year. So that is sort of, I don't know, has supplemented the, the budget. And then there has been a proposed or a transfer from the Presley Settlement Fund, which, as was mentioned earlier, was kind of a result of this, this lawsuit from decades ago. And that was about $40,000 transferred in. There was one identified capital improvement project. That was the Owani Lane Sidewalk. We were able to reconstruct that sidewalk. Fortunately, there wasn't a deeper issue at that location. So we were able to do that for much less than we anticipated cost-wise. Originally, we had budgeted around $80,000. The current estimate, final estimate of the cost is around 26. So overall though, the annual revenue, without the one-time transfers or the sort of carryover money, beginning next year will become basically $47,000. To just run the typical process of having these meetings and doing the tax roll, because there's, you know, certain, there's usually two meetings, staff reports and then sending in the engineer's report. That costs an estimate around $24,000. So really of the remaining normal annual revenue, it's probably half of that revenue. So maybe $23,000 left for looking at anything, to maintaining anything. So it's very limited. I would, the other element I would bring up is I am aware that the city in past practice has utilized its own maintenance forces in the GAD areas. Those aren't necessarily reflected taking out of the GAD funds. Those are basically being done on either general fund or other fund. So there is, I would say, some dollars that are used from, probably from the general fund that are supplementing this district at this point. And if you truly took every cost into effect and put it in here, I think it would be already in the red, so to speak. So I, I, I think it's important that the, the board members understand, you know, the current situation. situation. I am aware that in the past, there's been some discussion of trying to go for another vote. Obviously, that's all, you know, a challenge to be able to get the board, all the voting members within the district to assess themselves further. I have looked at other districts. I mean, there's roughly 40-plus GADS within California, so they all have different budgets. I would say the last thing I would kind of emphasize is, this is just talking about operating costs. The real benefit of a GAD is to basically build a reserve, right? And you should really be having a dollar amount, hopefully in the millions, to be able to address when a landslide does happen. Obviously, you want to do everything you can do at the cheapest price to, you know, avoid that. But fundamentally, I would say most GADS are set up to have a reserve for the, hopefully never happen, but it could happen, situation. And that's what the purpose, these GADS being set up. So I'm happy to take questions with, appreciate feedback on what priorities the board would like to emphasize. And we would return back with a proposed sort of budget based on some of the priorities identified and to hopefully, when we put together the next engineer's report, where those funds would potentially come from. So thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And just two things, and then we'll jump in with other questions. But I know that we've talked about Arinda, and if you can give us kind of a comparison on that, what their fund looks like. And then do we have an estimate after this of what our costs, total cost for repair are even at a minimum at this point?
I'll start with your second question. No, we have not done a sort of comprehensive cost estimate of all the items discussed tonight. I think we'd like to get some direction. We will happy to put it together. I think even if, you know, obviously, no one's saying it's going to be this amount of dollars, you know, tonight. But it would help to understand sort of priorities and to be able to focus it for the, for the board for future discussion. Now, in terms of looking at other local geologic hazard abatement districts in the area, the Arinda GAD, which I was not the manager of, we had a consultant that did the management, but I was involved in it. Generally speaking, right now has like a, and it's a relatively new one, it's about $3 million in reserve right now. Their assessments are much higher. It's more in the like the $3,000 range. But they have fewer homes, much fewer homes. Right now, I believe it's around 260 units compared to here. I, when I worked with Contra Costa County, I was involved with the Geological Hazard Abatement District in San Ramon, in Doorty Valley specifically. Those are, that one has, you know, 12,000 homes, so it's spread out much more. But the rough assessment for, for per unit is closer to the $180 to $200 a unit per year. And they currently have a reserve of like $12 million. I can discuss more of the operating, but to give you some bookend scale of, you know, a smaller, but to a certain degree, it's very much specific for each site because, you know, regardless of the number of units, it's how much open space it is relative, you know? So it just, the units give you kind of what you're dividing the sort of the assessment up over. But, you know, if you have a lot more area, obviously, it's going to cost more. You know, in terms of scale, I would say the Arinda GAD, the area is smaller than Clayton's. The ceremony one is probably quite, it's definitely larger, but I wouldn't say magnitude's larger, but it's definitely quite a big area. So hopefully, that provides a little bit more context.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I have lots of questions. And some of these are just judgment calls, so we may not have answers. Do we have a schedule of V ditch maintenance and the cadence? Because it sounds like V ditch maintenance is like preventative maintenance? Are you okay?
I'm sorry. I will, I will, I will comment on that when I make.
Sure, sure. I'm just wondering if that, if that exists.
Basically, under, since we've taken over, the approach is to have the maintenance crew, currently the city crews go out in October timeframe and do about a three to four-week cleaning of the ditches, followed by our BSK team, who does the inspection of the area.
The which team?
BSK, our geotechnical subconsultant. They'll then, that's what they did this year. They would inspect the site, and that's where they take the photos. They did some supplemental, obviously, in December. It is a sort of large area, obviously. And then per the plan of control, the idea is go twice a year. So the other time of year would probably be after the storms, and so it would be in the springtime. And then generally speaking, you'd want to have your annual report be tied with this discussion of when you're going to set your rate assessment and your budget. So I think that sort of schedule of having the second inspection in early spring, it's, you know, unfortunately, not unfortunate, but it's raining obviously longer than probably we're used to. Then you would have this kind of tie into, well, you have these projects that need to come up because the storm had this, these issues, and then you need to budget into your, your capital improvement portion of your GAD budget of what you're going to set aside. So for example, you know, the area of Windmill Canyon, we've gotten some quotes to be able to remove the, basically the mud out of that basin to restore capacity again. And then some of those elements, we are trying to get relief through CalOES and FEMA, but there's no guarantee of that. But that is being submitted to be able to hopefully recover some cost. But those type of activities where there's repair projects or budgeting just for repair projects that are going to happen, something moves, and then you should have some capital replacement budget of, you want to, you know, replace a certain amount of V ditch, 200 feet a year or whatever it is. So you're, because these facilities are pretty old now. I mean, they are, depending on the facility, going to be running to the end of their life. And so ideally, you are always, you know, scheduled to be able to have it enough money to replace them by the end of their life. So those are the other components I would say you want to be looking into when you're setting your budget.
Thank, that, thank you. That's good. So you mentioned three to four-week effort in the fall. Is it a similar timeframe targeted in the springtime?
Well, the springtime is more, just the inspection.
Inspection.
Now, I would say, obviously, if issues are identified, you know, you know, people need to be dispatched, and they were during the storms, to go address locations. But right now, from what I've seen in terms of the history, is that the, you clear out the ditches before the, you know, the storm season comes. Weed abatement is another issue. Obviously, with fire concerns, that's another area that has to be addressed because these are big open spaces and you have fire code requirements as well.
So it's three to four week. Is that sufficient to do the maintenance that's necessary? Or is that just time allotted and they get to what they can get to?
Well, I have one data point this year, you know? So I would say.
Because I know in the report, historically, we had deferred V ditch maintenance in lieu of spending the money for the Owani Lane project?
I did see that in the prior report. This year, the, the crew went, my understanding, a crew member went out with seasonal workers to do the clearing for the three weeks. And then I believe within probably two weeks or three weeks, I think, that was the timeframe when BSK did their first site review of the GAD areas. So, I mean, at that time, before the storms, it was fairly clear. I would say, I mean, not every spot was perfect, but I would say they did address the locations. But they only have, my understanding is they've only done that once a year, not in the springtime, not on a regular basis, I guess, is the best way to say.
And this is essentially work from city maintenance crews, but have you observed a general fund transfer to cover, or sorry, a fund transfer from the GAD to the general fund to cover that maintenance?
The only, there is a, a transfer of GAD funds for roughly about $8,000 back into the general fund. It's identified for $8,100 something dollars. That's for district administration. I believe that's generally for the city clerk's time in covering, you know, basically, you have to prepare the agenda as, you know, put out. I did not see specifically ones for funding, you know, maintenance-related workers or anything like that. So the only one I did see was the $8,000.
Okay. I mean, that potentially could be a function of us not tracking it or just not doing it? I don't, I don't know. Do we ever, do we have a, an idea of why that would be? Because it would be appropriate, right?
I personally, I would say, I think it's better accounting to either charge against the GAD directly and fund 212 for what you believe is the cost of either your in-house people or your outside contractors. Or if it's a regular, basically, you're taking a percentage of some person's time, so three weeks out of, you know, whatever, then you, you, you mark the transfer over and be specific that this is, you know, to cover someone else who's being technically funded on the books as general fund. But I, I, I would advise that you probably want to see the general transfer, general fund transfer coming into the GAD, so you really know what, what is being put into the GAD. That way, the members, the people who pay into the GAD recognize, you know, what, what their dollars are paying for or how much of a percentage it's really paying for in terms of the true cost of having all the GAD functions completed. You know, I personally, I mean, it's no different, I mean, it's being done now, but you would just, obviously, just showing the, the maintenance worker charging against the GAD, and then you would have a general fund transfer of taking that less from that particular maintenance workers, you know, charging against the general fund and just putting it toward a transfer into the GAD.
Okay.
Well, and also too, then you'd have a, there'd be some kind of a paper trail that work has been done and in case anyone in the GAD is asking.
Well, I would say certainly, you know, the concerns about the work being done, that is something we, we have to monitor, you know, when we do our inspections. I think this is more the accounting of where the dollars are spent. You know, obviously, you know, where the dollars are spent in the GAD is just a line number, right? But truly making sure that work is done is a separate issue. So I think they are related, but not necessarily that's going to be the reason why you're going to know for sure it's done.
What's the typical lifespan of an inclinometer slash piezometer?
I would defer to the BSK ones.
Assuming that they don't break for movement?
Unless it breaks. I don't, I just don't know.
Is it literally PVC?
Yeah.
Like the kind I can buy at Home Depot?
Yes.
As long as you protect it.
Just turn it on again.
There you go. So, yeah, it is PVC, but it's very durable PVC, but it won't, of course, win against the landslide, right? So the number one concern would be to have a proper cap and to be locked, because believe it or not, you know, people love throwing stuff in holes, and that could basically waste a lot of money. So like the ones we saw at Keylock Way, the cul-de-sac, they are lockable, but there's no lock in there. So luckily, I think the community seems to be not, you know, damaging things. But I would say if, if it doesn't shear it off, it can easily last 20 years, right? As long as you protect it and cap it, so debris doesn't fall into the hole and plug it up.
Okay, thank you. What happens if the GAD, in its current state, its current funding state, if there's a slide that affects more than one property? Who pays for that? If the GAD has no money? Is the city backstop it then?
Well, it's, so the, the GAD is part of an insurance pool, so it would likely be a claim that the, the city would put in, and there's probably a deductible.
Like MPA insurance?
I don't know exactly who the carrier is off the top of my head. I do know that part of the budget of the GAD, I believe it's about $7,000, goes toward liability insurance. And that actually, based on some looking through the records, had gone up because of the, the Presley, well, the Keylock Way area issue from decades ago. You are a separate entity. That's the whole purpose of having the separate meetings. So this, it reduces the liability against the city, and that's one of the huge benefits you get. Granted, you know, politically, all these other issues still come up because they're your residents, they're the same folks, but technically, you're a separate entity. And so if you don't have the money, you don't have the money. But you are, as a GAD, you know, you own these open spaces, you are probably subject to lawsuits, certainly, and that's what already happened. And, you know, you could be in court quite a bit. And a decision does need to be made of, are you going to transfer money from some other source to do it? Or basically, say you don't have the money to do it, and you either leave it or you take your time. I don't know. Those are all decisions, obviously, the board would have to make, but you are a separate entity. And so if someone was suing, they would be suing the GAD in this particular case. I'm sure they would probably sue the city too, but there would be a, you know, a way to say that you are a separate entity.
Okay, now that makes sense. So is there, is there like a list of responsibilities of the GAD as it currently stands? I mean, I know that there's that long document. Is that essentially the list?
That's, that's, I want, because it is quite old, we tried to do as much research in pulling up documents. It's not perfect. You know, some of these were typewritten, right? Because of the timeframe. But the plan of control is kind of your, your, your main document. That's typically what's required by the law. So that identifies sort of the responsibilities, but also the role and abilities that the GAD has to go and condemn or do other actions. Like you said, it is technically a subdivision of the state. I'm getting a little bit into the weeds here, but you do have different ways of approaching, like in terms of contracting, it's simpler too. You know, like landslide happens, putting out to bids or you get a much simplified process. That was the purpose, I think, when they tried to enact these laws.
Okay, so not, there's no concise, like a more concise list? Is that something that you think would be beneficial?
You could certainly amend the plan of control. You know, I think that would be reasonable to update something that's obviously, you know, 30 years old. To be able to, to make it more specific, I think it's a reasonable approach.
I mean, at least to add clarity.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then I have, I have two other questions, and they're related. And I think you tried to do it already, so I will say like, my question is really like, what are the one-time activities that need to be done in order to get us current on our, what I would consider things that we've deferred? That's one part of the question, including associated cost estimates of those one-time activities, like how many inclinometers do we need to buy if we were to say we want to get current on all of our, all of our monitoring? So that's one. And then the associated stuff with that. And then what would the funding level need to be, assuming that we've now done all of the things to bring us up to speed? The funding level? Assuming that we've now done all of the things to bring us up to speed, the funding level to perform all of the operational activities that adequate monitoring and prevention activities would entail and associated cost? Like, that's a, I mean, I think that's like the critical question.
Yeah, I'll start with your second question, and maybe I'll ask BSK to talk about how do we do the immediate items. But I think long-term, in terms of operating at a, a good level for the, the district, I, I think you need to be closer in the, you're probably having expenditures around $300,000 a year. I know it's much bigger than what you have now, but based on what you see in other districts, my own, you know, I won't go through every little one, but reality of doing the monitoring, right? Sending someone out to, to go look and, you know, that's cost money, these, all these things taken into account. And frankly, trying to build some, you have two components. The operating reserve, because, you know, this is property tax money, comes in chunks, so you, you do have some, when you're running very thin, you might not technically have that money yet, right, when you need to spend it. So you do want to have that reserve, and then you want to have a capital reserve, and then you want to have an ultimate reserve. So I'd say the 300,000, you know, a very ballpark number is to operate at an expenditure level I think is reasonable. But then you probably want something on top of that, whatever reserve you feel you want to get to. Like if you want to assume whatever, you know, $100,000 a year, and then hopefully you build up in 10 years a million dollars, you know, and that's what you're comfortable with, and that's what you would need.
I mean, it's much like what we do in the bad districts for like HOAs, right? I mean, you're essentially building, accruing dollars for future maintenance that you know will have to be done at some point.
And I think
Less certainty maybe.
The capital replacement is what you just described, but I think because of, I mean, it's a, the whole purpose is there's a geologic hazard here, right? And so you want to have beyond just the replacement cost of improvements of be able to address something if it happens, right? The landslide happens and you have the funds to be able to go. Now, would you utilize your insurance, of course, you, you know, all these other factors? But, you know, having the, the, just the reserve to be able to go out and address it quickly. Because obviously, if, if it's a bad enough event, you have probably homes halfway down a hill, and you have an immediate need to get in there. And so if you don't have the dollars, then you still have, then you're taking the time to figure it out, or to, you know, even to leverage dollars in the future, you know, those type, those things take time. So the, the flexibility of having the reserve already on hand is you, you just go in and do it, right? And you're not having a number of house, you know, if a road gets cut off, even and your house isn't necessarily affected, but that would definitely have a huge impact of how do people get out, right, and drive around? Those, you know, those are other issues that might not even involve a particular house, or, or, you know, some people that aren't even affected directly by their home.
Okay. And then the first part?
So I, I would ask, these gentlemen come back up in terms of the immediate. I know we talked about two inclinometers and a few other locations, so I, you know, if you take the time.
I would, I'd, I'd just recommend think like larger, in terms of like, if we want to get us up to speed, what you would want.
Yeah. So before I start on that, I wanted to add one more thing to what Larry was mentioning. I think a, a well-run GAD, in, in addition to have the extra contingency fund, you also have already, and maybe that the city already has this in place, but you have basically on-call, on-call contracts with contractors for emergency repair, right? So you don't have to say, oh gee, who do we call? You just, you know, hey, something happened last night, just call ABC excavators, have them show up. The geotechnical engineer shows up, says, yep, deep enough, wide enough, call it good, until we have a chance to come in, in, in a month or two and do an actual investigation. Because a geotechnical investigation, from a permitting standpoint, you know, you have to get a drilling permit, that takes minimum of 10 business days. So you have all these bureaucratic things to follow through. Most drillers out there, minimum six-week backlogs, right? Now, it could be an emergency response thing where you can actually do the drilling on a weekend, but then you have to go back to the county and say, hey, are we allowed to be drilling on a weekend? Because they have an, to have an inspector. And if there's an emergency, I would imagine they would be compliant, type of thing. As far as the cost, right? Certainly, there will be a higher upfront cost because of the installation of the inclinometer. Once those things are installed, assume they don't get sheared off right away. You know, and again, at, at least one location, that is not the indication, the other one, we have no idea. You know, if we install an inclinometer at Key Lock cul-de-sac, if things are moving faster, maybe it'll last, I don't know, two to five years, and then eventually another inclinometer might be needed. So one inclinometer, roughly 30 to 40,000, probably closer to the 30,000. Our rough estimate, you know, we didn't prepare a formal proposal for Larry, but we did contact a, a driller that we use often. It has to be on a slope, so that's a little more complicated. It requires a track-mounted drill rig, so not your standard. If we do two, there is an economy of scale, it would be roughly 60,000, right? But on top of that, once you install the inclinometer, now you have the monitoring, right? The GAD document, the control plan recommends quarterly readings. And I think Rich mentioned that certainly in the beginning, we would like to do quarterly. And then if there isn't much movement going on, then we can space it out probably minimum twice a year, right? I think that would be reasonable until we, you know, get to a point that maybe we can even space further than that. As far as dollars go, again, we have not put a number together. But if we're looking at two inclinometers, 60,000 roughly. One reading event would probably be on the order of, you know, $2,000 a day, plus or minus, with some expenses, you know, the inclinometer equipment, it's very, how do I say? Not proprietary, but it's very specific use. So either you have to own it, or most likely, in our case, we would rent it periodically. So there would be a cost associated with that. So with that said, I think if you're looking at a order of magnitude, with all this, this monitoring, right? And again, this doesn't include the actual yearly maintenance of the V ditches, right? If, if it was my option, I, I, I would say, you know, within a five-year period, you know, plan to replace X number of feet, and, you know, we could come up with a number. If I had to guesstimate, a good, a good rough number would be no less than 200 linear feet of V ditches within a five-year period. It might be more, some years more, or some periods less, right? As the GAD ages, certainly, the infrastructure will age and will need to be replaced. Because even if there is no movement, concrete eventually, you know, water will, you know, wear, wear it out. The sun also does it, it, its work, and eventually it gets brittle and cracks, and it needs to be replaced. So as far as the monitoring itself, I think a good ballpark number a year, Larry and, and the board, would be between 50 and 100,000. That's without actually running the numbers. Probably closer to the 50 in terms of, you know, doing the, you know, yearly visit, preparing a report, and then doing the, the, the monitoring events, probably somewhere between the 50 and 100. And that's just to, you know, to monitor type of thing. So does that answer your question roughly?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I think our intention would be, you know, we could bring back, obviously, different elements as more of a summary with tighter numbers, so that way, you know, for more budgetary purposes. But you, I mean, I think you want to understand the scale. Obviously, I think it's beyond the current assessment amount you're getting. So, you know, you, you do have to figure out of where, how are you going to address the, the funding, obviously, long-term? So I think our intention was to give the board an update as to the state of the, the district, but also where it needs to go in terms of the true cost of operating it at a, you know, a level that I feel is important to reach for something that is, you know, a, a relatively big liability, you know, in terms of a landslide.
Yeah, when, I guess my only recommendation would be when we're talking about like the funding level to get us up to speed, and then the funding level for operational maintenance. I would also recommend that when you come back, that of that operational maintenance, you prioritize what is most important in terms of activity. Because I think it's a good exercise to understand what we need to do, or what we should do from an optimal state, and then temper that with pragmatism on what we can actually do. That'll help like balance the costs versus level of effort.
As well as long-term, right? Capital improvement?
Yes.
Long-term. Okay.
That is all my questions, I think.
Any other questions?
I just have a general one, and I realize that most of you guys weren't here when this happened. But the Presley settlement that occurred, can we go back to them?
I, I doubt it. I, I would say they probably don't exist anymore, given not only the time, but usually most developers set up a specific corporation for, and I, I, so I, I do doubt it, but certainly I, I think these issues, and well, and the settlement already happened, so I'm assuming the, the city and the, the GAD release them from future.
That is something I'm curious about though, because I want to know what the parameters were of that. And maybe that's something you can send to all of us offline, or put it on, or point me to where it is online? I'm just curious what it covered, especially given that these landslides, this, the landslides occurred, they were built on top of, and then there's further erosion. I just want to know what we released them from. And I'm assuming it's probably further erosion, but I'm curious.
I did find a cop, electronic copy or a scanned copy of the, the Presley settlement. I, I did not include it in the, the packet, so my apologies, but we can certainly provide a copy to everyone.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Glenn, is there any public comment on this? Thanks for hanging in there with us.
Thank you. For the record, Glenn Miller, Pebble Beach Drive, that would be Peacock Creek. Well, I'm going to go back to a couple of things that some of the council people have talked about, and the soils engineer talked about, and that's surface water maintenance. In other words, making sure the V ditches, drain inlets have been maintained. And I'm just going to go back 15 years, and I, I think it was really revealing when you started to ask, when did the monitoring stop? Well, that was right after the former city manager decided to stop doing the maintenance. I've been complaining about this. I had a neighbor who has a house right next to a, a, a pretty good-sized V ditch with a drain inlet. And he came down one day, he'd been, he'd been living there about five years, and he goes, do they ever maintain that? And I said, no, they, I haven't seen, buddy, I complained. Originally, I complained to the city maintenance department, and they told me, we were told not to. They specifically, I mean, it's, you know, legally, probably it's hearsay, but I had a good relationship with that guy because I was turning in sprinkler heads and stuff on my walks. And he said, no, we were told not to. So a good 15-plus years, they haven't done any maintenance. Then we had an interim city manager. I came down here, I made an appeal. I think Jeff was, maybe we should take, we should at least talk to him. And I had a meeting with the city manager, the maintenance, the brand-new maintenance guy, and the maintenance guy just laughed when we, when I pointed out the V ditch that my neighbor talked about. And he goes, oh, you mean the, the, that V ditch that hadn't been maintained in 10 years? And I said, yes, that's the V ditch I'm talking about. So we had it done then. And that was probably five years ago. I came down here in October, a few days after the BMPs is supposed to be in place, October 15th, and I said, hey, you haven't done anything. And they didn't do a thing. And if you tell me that they came by and did maintenance, and this is what it looks like now, that's not regular maintenance. You tell me that that's all accumulated since, since October? They didn't do a damn thing in my neighborhood. And I'm speaking here of Peacock Creek because I, I'm retired. I look, I pay attention, I know who's, who's been around. Here's this, here's the famous V ditch that my neighbor has, right there. You tell me if that's been maintained since October. I took that picture on December 30th, and I sent it all to a memo, I sent it all in a memo to, to the entire city council. So where are we going to get the 15 years' worth of 45 or 40,000 dollars' worth of maintenance that wasn't done and has caused the problem? You mean, you're, you're talking about raising our, our assessments. I know that's what's going to come. You're going, oh, we'll have to do another vote. But when, how are we going to recover those funds that weren't spent? And I know what happens with those funds. It's the same thing that I, that you, you talked about earlier, that with the stormwater funds. All of a sudden, the funds don't get expanded, and at the end of the year, somebody does, puts on the consent calendar, let's move those funds into the general fund. And that has been happening constantly. And especially with regard to water maintenance issues and the V ditches. And then one last thing. Above the 17th Hall at Oakhurst, there's a series of V ditches. They have not been touched once in the 25 years that I, I have lived there. I have a great view of it. I, you know, when somebody comes to do maintenance on it, I would see it. The good news is there's all kinds of slides over it, and the cows are having a, a ball drinking the water out of it. But those things don't run at all. And one, one last point. I think you should send these guys back and, and get a recommendation to all this. This, this is a fully-plugged drain inlet. You can see the weeds growing at the top of the drain inlet. That means that this drain inlet does not discharge to the lower system down, down below it. It doesn't do it. It just sits there, runs off, ruins the trail, whatever. So I, I, my, my frustration is, yeah, you're going to go, oh, we have this problem, we have to do, we have to spend all this money. But how do we get the money back that the city didn't, and they stuck it in the general fund? They put it in their reserve funds, they put it in their pension funds, whatever the hell they did with it. You know, because money's really fungible around here. And I, I commend Jeff, Jim, and Kim because you've actually taken this issue seriously. The last couple of years, they, nobody has taken it seriously. I come down there and they say, thank you for your comments. So I, I commend you. I hope we can move forward. One of the things you need to do is clean the damn system out totally before you do anything. Because what good does it do to monitor something if, if the, the infrastructure that was supposed to take care of it is clogged and doesn't work anymore? So thank you very much for my comments. I'm very frustrated about this. I'm glad, again, I want to commend you guys for actually bringing this up because in 15 years, never been, never been something that the council decided that they were going to address. You promised that you would address it, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And
Oh, I have, can I have one last thing?
Sure.
I, I do have a pending problem, and I'd be, I'd be remiss in not telling you. There is in, in Peacock Creek, and I have a picture of it, I'll, I'll dig it out. But in Peacock Creek, there in Peacock Creek, there, here it is, there's a fire trail that goes, there's a flag lot, and that's how these guys got access to the, behind Brandywine Place. That fire trail, or, or fire access road, it's, I took this in December, the, the stuff is sloughed off, it's, it's starting to cover up the road. I don't know how they're going to fight fires if they can't get up the road, but you're going to need somebody to address it. All the, all the, all the swells, they're, they're totally full, and the stuff's just, just fluffing down, and it, it's a mess. And if you send that, these guys, they'll, they'll also notice that the storm drains, manhole covers, now sit two inches above the, the, at least two inches above the street level, which means something's sliding.
Okay.
So you can take a look at that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Larry, one additional thing, do you think, when you come back to us with the priorities, and then the ongoing maintenance, and maybe long-term capital improvement, are you able to give an accounting of GAD expenditures over the last several years? Do we have access to that?
I could certainly work with the finance department to pull, pull the expenditures to, to find out what was spent out of the GAD funds.
Okay. Well, if I can synthesize a little bit what you've said, just to see if I can kind of clarify a little bit. If we assume, like, current assessment revenue is a 47,000 each year, it doesn't see, I mean, it seems like on the maintenance side, that's a very small portion of the 47,000. So the, I would say the vast, I mean, it's a, it's not the answer I think Mr. Miller is looking for, but I think the vast majority of funds that have been collected are expended for administration and the other things that you've listed here, that probably consume, doing some rough math, at least 85% to 90% of the assessment, just in this, all the overhead costs. Is that accurate? Or, you know, somewhere in the higher ranges?
Well, you know, we could talk specifically, you know, looking at the sheet that I did, the red line markups of the current fiscal year's budget. If you look under the list of expenditures, I would say the first three items are project slash engineering-related, and, you know, it's looking at certain things, obviously having the, the time to go out and prepare this report. But starting at general manager fees down, I would say strictly administration costs.
Yeah, so if I, if I look at that, that's 13, 20, 22, 23.
It's about 24,000.
24, so that's, that's over half.
Over half, yes.
At least.
Yes.
And then you have a big red box that says, does not include the cost of city maintenance.
Correct.
Right? So...
But if they don't do the maintenance, what cost is that?
I mean, it sounds like, I mean, my understanding from what you're saying is that the GAD doesn't have an actual obligation or responsibility to do the maintenance. Like, the GAD could say, do no maintenance, and there's really no penalty.
Well, it's certainly the, the long-term effects could...
Those are bad, that's bad.
Yeah.
But, I mean, what is legally binding and required does not seem to include maintenance.
I believe in the Plan of Control, it does identify maintenance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Now, it, it doesn't say...
Specifically...
I do think it has a, it's in here, the Plan of Control.
We should understand what the requirements are, then.
Yes. It's under Attachment 1, in terms of...
You have a page number, perhaps?
Yeah, I will...
What'd you say?
170 of the PDF.
Thank you.
Yes, let's see.
Point of order, really quickly. Director Trippiano, President, what do we call you, Chair?
Chair.
We need to check the online public comment, and then close it, and then come back.
Janet, is there anyone online?
Chair Trippiano, there are no hands raised on this item.
Alrighty. And are we checking on that, and...
So, yeah, under, I think, Section C of the Plan of Control, talks about both inspection and maintenance, and...
Okay, here, yeah, this is perfect. This is, I, I lost this in, when I was reading through these hundreds of pages.
I, I would say, adding on to what you were, you were asking, Chair Trippiano, is, yes, just doing the cost accounting of the Fund 212 will only show likely administration costs, right? Because that's what's been charged against it in terms of maintenance or outside contractor costs. Without having pulled the records, it might not be there, because it's being handled under a different fund. So, we, I have tried working with our maintenance staff to quantify the sort of level, and that's where we determined there was three weeks of time in October, and, but to get the actual dollar amount does require a little bit more detail of kind of pulling that out.
Okay. Anything else?
I mean, given the language on the scope of work here, it, it, it seems pretty clear that there are, there is a duty to do certain things. And so I would say, in your preparation of scope, or of like, here's what we should be doing for regular operations, I would tie it back to the document, to say, like, the document says X, we will do, or shall do this, so here's how we are satisfying this requirement. Because it does then seem that if, in fact, we are not doing the scope of work that is in the document, then the GAD at least is at, you know, could be at risk for non-performance of what is required. So, it is, I think it behooves us to at least identify what that is, and then with the funding levels as they exist, prioritize the actions, you know, that, that seems like a reasonable course of action.
And the costs associated with doing that work?
Because I would say, scope of work, cost. I mean, you may just be cooked at that point, but who knows?
I guarantee you'll be beyond the existing $47,000 revenue.
I mean, I think we spent $47,000 tonight.
Yeah.
It is adding up, yes.
So, okay.
Okay. So, there, we don't need a motion, do we?
No, you, not tonight. I, I would summarize that you would like us to come back with a cost estimate based off of the current Plan of Control, and meeting those requirements. We could also identify some of the one-time repairs we know of already, and provide that in a future meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I'd be curious what your assessment cost would be for the Peacock Creek slide that you've identified. It's, it's kind of disconcerting, just by looking at the, the depth of by which that inclinometer was shared off relative to that figure. It's not consistent. And, and I want to know what your thoughts are for assessment, whether it be additional inclinometers, or some type of geophysical survey to figure out how the drainage is even, even stalled, if possible. It's, it's perplexing.
I mean, it sounds like there's potential catastrophic risk.
It's, we just don't know. That's the, I think it's, it's a huge black box, and that, and that's what I, what I'm seeing from that drawing versus what you're saying.
I think we can work, I'll work with BSK, but, you know, some of the things, it's beyond, potentially beyond just inclinometer, you may want to bore...
That's just monitoring, and then you discover, and then you have to do more action.
Potentially, yes. If the, the answer is potentially bad, yes. But I think it would involve them developing a scope of work that's reasonable to really determine what the issues potentially are, and then I would say it's, it's separate than just an inclinometer-type situation, and to, just to be upfront with the board. So we can include that and develop that. So you have all the information available to you, and then you guys can make a decision or at least direction.
Yeah, and I would, I would add, not just that one slide area, but I mean, like, let's look at what it takes to bring us up to speed, at least, so we know what we're dealing with. So, one thing that triggered a question was, this is what it says in the current, what did we call it? Plan of Control? Could we change the Plan of Control?
We can, it says, that's what I was going to say. It's in the very last paragraph. This was from 1990, and it reads...
This one would be amended one already.
...will be subject to revisions and modifications as new data or investigations warrant, and I would say, my request would be, we need to update this, and any recommendations based on, is it BSK? I almost said BKS. BSK, and yourself. There's a lot that we need to update in here.
Well, can we protect ourselves and say, our new Plan of Control does not include these activities?
We're going to have to do some research on that, because I think you're asking a lot of questions, I think, to minimize risk.
And they are, they are legal in nature, and, you know, I'm not saying that we don't want to, but if we want, if we're talking about mitigating risk, I mean, I think we have to look out for that as well. So, if we are unable to perform the duties as required, if we have the ability to change it, that could be something that also mitigates our risk, not saying that we don't want to still, you know, meet our obligations. So, it's just a question.
Anything else? And I guess that is our board items, right, for the future meetings. Unless there's any other GAD topics for a future meeting?
This satisfies my board request, so I'm not going to make it again.
Okay.
You can take it off, Janet.
Then I will say this meeting is officially adjourned at 11:25 PM.
Oh my God. All right, so, with that, with, we are, we will reconvene the regular city council meeting, and, thank you. Does anyone need a recess, or do you want to quickly move? Okay, so let's quickly move into closed session right now. We're... All right, I will, bringing us back from closed session, there are no reportable items. I will adjourn the meeting at 11:41.